Any more echoes? Nope, good. All right. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lavarr.
Present.
Councilmember Alteiri. Here. Councilmember Keys.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Zuluwaga.
Here.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is item number three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And we're going to begin with three A. DDA presentation on the budget allocation and progress of Woodland Station. And I'm not sure who's here to present that. Al, are you here to present it?
Yes, I can talk about some.
Okay.
There's three.
Okay. Let me get to my screen.
Murph come.
Greetings, Mayor Protem Lavarr. Members of council and staff. Thank you for receiving me this evening to talk about one of the three avenues that the DDA Board is exploring, which we hope will lead to an economically viable, community compatible development for that big land known as Woodland Station. The context of it is, over the past about 20 years, various entrepreneurs have viewed the land, examined the development, entertained the challenges, gave the project a great thought, but backed away from it. Several consultants have been hired to reflect on what might be an economically viable use of the property, but from that, nothing has happened. Recently, I've talked to two general realtors searching for an idea, searching for something, anything that might give us a new avenue, a new look at what we might do with that particular item. Nothing has happened at this point. Recently, I talked with two realtor groups specializing in commercial properties, again searching, but so far, nothing productive has come from that. For many years, the desires of the DDA Board has been to sell the entire parcel intact to one developer, but yet, that has not happened. So I'm sort of promoting then, a new and different direction, a new direction that probably is needed. I've been furthering then, the DDA Board on the repackaging of the Woodland Station parcel, coordinate with adjacent property owners to examine a beneficial property use activity even outside the Woodland Station. I've talked with one property owner about such. After about two hours of talking with that individual, I received a sincere willingness to cooperate. The new direction. A significant issue is the small amount of land available for economic opportunity necessary to offset the development costs. I've been proposing that there are three, maybe four, land areas, each with a different potential use and a different commercial value. I propose that the DDA establish the perimeter property lines and corners for each of the three parcels. This is a subdivision process. This process is complex, detail oriented, and time consuming. Hence, I suggest a professionally qualified person be hired to work full time to move through the subdivision process and further the coordination with adjacent property owners. That person is tasked with get the property ready to receive a smaller individual's need. This without having to go through and try to solve all of the issues of the entire parcel. The costs involved in something like this would be the salary for a professional person, various subdivision expenses, probably utility extensions, surface drainage, detention ponds, school district expenses if there's residential in the area. The revenue to help offset some of this would come from the sale of the land at market value. There could be an allocation of the collected property taxes when they then come forward. There'd be sales tax very early and use taxes very early. So in summary then, it's a new marketing strategy, hire a professional person, smell, sell smaller portions of land as needed by the entrepreneurial activity that's defined. Yes, the DDA is the developer, but the board is the supervisor. That's the direction that I and some others have entertained as a topic. The board has not made a final decision yet as to which way to go, but we are beset with a number of issues there. Any questions, thoughts, comments that we can take back to the board?
Counsel, any questions?
I think there's going to be three different presentations. This is one of three aspects of where the DDA is going with it. So I guess we can ask individually or wait till all three are presented.
Okay, who else is presenting?
Murph.
Okay.
And I think Tanner's online.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
He's here.
Good evening. Elijah Murphy, 204 West Smithwood Avenue, and Vice Chair of the downtown development authority. We just received a letter from Mr. Williams, Mike Williams, about his intent to exclusively negotiate with the DDA. He has picked up an additional developer slash investor from Colorado Springs, and I'm hoping this was a result of an introduction I made. So as we move forward, trying to figure out how to get this piece that Al explained with subdividing and overcoming the issues, I'm not sure where the DDA would find the $3 million from 10 years ago to do the highway improvements if that were the case. However, that doesn't stop us from going out looking for grants and other things like that to make that a distinct possibility. We know that whatever we do is only going to help and improve the property and the surrounding area and the surrounding properties. So as we are continuing on with our endeavor to get it developed, we're going to continue to make introductions, networking being number one, and find that, you know, Mike Williams is, he really intends on going forward, then we have an endeavor. How much of it he will use is another piece, but we've put together a number of parts. For instance, the, there was a, I cannot remember clearly, the name of the music consortium that might be interested in coming in and putting in the music gazebo or the stage for Mr. Williams. And that is done with public, private, and 501(c) bonds, which would actually help Mr. Williams in his endeavor to continue that. So as we move forward, we're going to, like I said, continue the networking and bring people together. And we might actually see grants from C-Got to help us get this done. Well, we're going to look at every possibility, all right? Number one priority being to develop. The piece of bringing in public utilities and everything, well, we've got to, it's only a matter of money. I'm sure our state and any other bank in the area would be more than happy to help with that. I believe Tanner, there he is. Tanner is going to come up here and give you piece number three, and then after that, I guess we'll be, to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council members, staff, and City Woodland Park. Sorry, I'm a little bit late to party tonight. Last time that we were here and engaged together, DDA and city, that is, we were discussing the DDA's budget, this budget session, we proposed a budget that included $3,000 in the Woodland Station improvements line item. We held a special session together to discuss these specific ideas and expectations for uses of those funds. And I know that between us, we do have something of an understanding of why that wasn't brewed and what that money is still in that account being held for. To date, none of that money has been spent. I just want you to know that upfront. Now, I do need to tell you, there is one expenditure in the DDA's 2021, so this fiscal year's expenditures, that is in that account, is not related to the project that we've discussed. It was at Director Radley's request and agreed to by the DDA Board last year. It's 200 and something dollars, I think. It was part of the design work for some interpretive panels that the GM Historical Preservation Committee had been working on. So you will, if you look at our financial report for the year, see that one small expenditure. Again, it was agreed to and approved sometime last summer or fall, and we expected the expenditure at that time. Aside from that, you know, the 30,000 that we had discussed remains unspent and sits in the DDA's fund today. The DDA has found itself dealing with this piece of property in in trying to resolve the public ownership of this property, one way or another, so that we can move the public out of its ownership position of it in accordance with the agreement between us and the obligations of the DDA. We have explored a number of ideas and possibilities for how to address this problem. One of those is, as you heard from Murph and as we've discussed in the past, is cultivating the current interests in the property. The only current interest right now is represented by Mike Williams and Company and is our number one priority. We've done what we can to facilitate that interest, including some of our own research on the property. We have met repeatedly with the developer. We have provided an abundance of information to them to support their research into the property, their due diligence. We have supported their concept plans, engaged NES, a professional land design consultant, land planning consultant, and helped pay the costs of drafting professional concept plans. We reviewed all the proposed uses, the concept plans, approved those as a board formally, and encouraged that developer to advance, knowing that they would begin to incur real costs moving forward and considering their business interests. We also had our attorney draft an exclusive negotiation agreement that our board then reviewed and approved and submitted to that developer so that should they decide to execute it, they would have some protection, knowing that we were engaged exclusively with them while they take their next steps. Last that we've heard from them, they do intend to engage in that exclusive negotiation agreement, and word from them on that came earlier this week. So we still have not seen a signed agreement from them or any proposed changes to it, but they do plan, they intend to pursue that. So we are anxious to see that and continue working with them. The second approach that the board has been engaged in is, as you've heard from Al Moore, and that is to take another look at the property itself, what can be done to subdivide it and support infrastructure and marketing of the property that may make it more appealing to developers and more sellable. That work is underway. Mr. Moore's been doing an excellent job, and I would say he is the right member of the board to be pursuing this and bringing back recommendations to the board. So we are also anxious to see what he comes up with and how we might advance those plans. Third and final, the board has been discussing and intends to proceed with another point of our equality plan in managing the Woodland Station, and that is a temporary use plan. In the meantime, until such time that something materializes on the property, an actual disposition and development agreement, actual contracts to buy and sell land, anything along those lines, what do we do with potentially very valuable and still a bit costly real estate asset that the public has owned now for 20 years? The board believes that it is in this community's best interest to beautify that property and put it into functioning and productive use. We believe this can be done with relatively minimal effort, relatively low cost, and a relatively short timeframe, relatively, meaning compared to these other parts of the plan that I've explained to you. You may recall in 2016, the board, the DDA did formally approve this temporary use plan, and it has been published on the DDA's website for quite some time, so it can be reviewed there by anyone, anytime. And we began work on that plan in 2016 by grading the property into most usable areas, beginning the revegetation and enhancement of the property with just a small allotment of trees and some pickmanns. Also installed now, another part of this original plan, is a cog car, as you know, and a stage location, so the property is going to belong down nicely, but there is more work to do. At this point, our board has reached consensus to advance these three, what may seem in some ways as competing, parts of a plan simultaneous. We believe that if we do, they will support each other. In some ways, they might pressure each other, and that among them, something will result. If we continue to pursue one train of thought, one effort aimed at one goal, we believe we're likely to realize the same that we've seen thus far, and that's next to now. So we're taking a different approach, and we'd like your questions answered so that you, the council, have a thorough understanding of what we intend to do, how we intend to go about it, and so that we have your support as we move forward. We do not want to do things that cause you to react unnecessarily and uncomfortably with what we might do, how we might allocate resources, and what we might see happen in the future. So that's why we would like to ask you, councilmen, to reconsider the very narrow and specific use of that $3,000 in the Woodland Station improvements line item that you previously authorized for the limited uses that we discussed. Those uses, as we mentioned, are still our top priority, should we be able to further that part of our plan. In the meantime, there are other parts of the plan to advance that may cost some money, take some effort, and some time, and require the DDA's involvement. It is our intent to proceed with this, and we'd like to open up use of that line item to all three parts of this plan, and trusting the DDA Board to make prudent decisions. And of course, with your oversight, not only this house members, but the DDA's on board. So that's it in a nutshell. Do you have any comments, concerns, questions?
Counsel, any questions? Sure.
Comment, comment and question. First of all, I want to thank you, and I'll say Mr. Coy because our acting city manager has upped the standards where we're all being formal, wearing blazers and everything. So Tanner, Mr. Coy, thank you for the presentation. You're responding to my direct request on behalf of Mr. Path and myself. We had, when we approved the $30,000, we had kind of put you on notice that we wanted to see significant progress, and we had given you a kind of a timeframe. I did attend the DDA meeting with you, and you did go to in a lot, far more detail of what you have accomplished in that amount of time. I'm glad you didn't spend too much time. I've got the list. If anybody wants to get the list, Tanner did provide it to me, Mr. Coy did provide it to me, and any one of them by themselves would probably go, eh, but when you take them in total over the period of time in the pandemic situation, to me, it was an acceptable list of accomplishments that you have been pursuing. So thank you for that piece of the information and to reassure us that the 30K is still there. That was the other piece. It has not been spent somewhere else. I did have a question, but I think you did answer it, but for clarification, the exclusive negotiating agreement was provided to Mr. Williams' organization, but confirming he has not signed it yet. It is not ratified by both parties, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're sending a shot across the bow that you are looking at other options so that he can either move forward if they choose, or they could miss an opportunity if they choose?
I might phrase it just a little bit differently.
A little nicer.
I think you understand.
Yes.
So your relative question, you said, you spoke about the three different approaches, and you said that you would like the flexibility to move forward on that. And I heard you say that the temporary use plan for beautifying the property is something that can be done relatively in a short time. Can you embellish on what that might look like?
Well, you know, that term's easy to use when comparing it to the other two parts of the plan because the subdivision process, evaluating the property itself, the real property and its physical nature, and how we might subdivide it and plat the property with utility and drainage easements and go through that whole process is time consuming and requires other professionals and more money. And so relative to that, we can enhance the property in much less time and for much less money relative to developing it with the developer. Should that part of our plan advance, it will take years to move the developer through the process and realize the brick and mortar structures and opening of new business in town. Within what I would hope would be a matter of months, we could make a very visible and meaningful difference in the state of the property, in its aesthetic value to Woodland Park and its utility, its functional, usable productivity to Woodland Park. Those of you who are familiar with the plan I mentioned earlier, the 2016 temporary use plan, it was drawn up with the idea of creating a venue that would support a wide range, the most, the widest range of events that we could imagine here in town. It's our largest vacant parcel in the downtown area. It's ideally situated directly off of Highway 24 with lots of visibility, great views of the peak, can hold lots of people. And now that our pandemic is beginning to wane and meeting together and gathering and crowds of people, particularly in outdoors, with our outdoor climate for the summer nearly upon us, we see it as advantageous to act now in cleaning up that property and enhancing it however we can to prepare it for gathering people and positioning them in the heart of downtown, directly across the highway and adjacent to our commercial entities where sales and tax revenues may result.
Can I ask a follow-up question then? So let's say that you move ahead with that, and then in a short period of time, because you've had a verbal from your option number one, from Mike Williams and his associates. So you get started on the beautification, and then Mike and his associates pull the trigger on theirs. So what's that going to mean for your budget and what's that going to mean for council if they both happen in this fiscal year?
Well, it's a good question, and I'm not sure I can give you an exact and accurate prediction, you know, without knowing the details of how it would all unfold. But I, you know, as treasurer who's intimately familiar with the DDA finances and their financial position, I have no concern whatsoever. In the event that any, that we proceed with parts two and three of this, this plan, if you will, we would not be expending so many dollars that we would be ill-equipped or unable to support any private investor interest in the property. If Mr. Williams chose to move forward this year, whatever that looked like, the DDA does have the funds to do what is reasonable as a public entity in support of that. It may require supplemental appropriation, $30,000 in that budget. If, let's say, 10,000 goes to part two of a plan and 10,000 goes to part three of this plan, and part one begins to advance and calls for $20,000 worth of support during this fiscal year, we find ourselves $10,000 short, and the DDA would be approaching you for supplemental appropriation to authorize those funds should they see it as appropriate to do so. And that is if and only if we don't have adequate savings in our other line items to cover the expenditure, which I expect us to have under, you know, using those numbers as example.
Good questions. Counsel, any further questions or comments?
I just assumed that this would be a different agenda item that we would undertake. We're not going to be taking any motions on this, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from counsel? Mr. Coy, go ahead.
So I would like to ask, is, without any need for a motion, does the council have an understanding for what's been described? And are you able to, at this point, I don't want to pressure you for it, but are you able to give us any indication as to whether you're generally in support of what we've described or not so that we can meet and continue to move ourselves forward?
Counsel, is anybody comfortable with answering that right now?
I will.
Sure.
Absolutely. I haven't ever shied away from the idea that I fully support the DDA and their board, recognizing the authority of the DDA Board to make decisions like this. The DDA exists because this government body cannot do what they do. So the need for some sort of consensus between DDA and city council is paramount at this point. The DDA is never going to be able to move forward with doing anything, and the board has done a very good job of seeking out a number of different options to satisfy a number of different paths, all headed in the right direction. But if this council continues to stand in But if this council continues to stand in their way and constantly go against the DDA, they're never going to be able to do what it is that they have been created to do. And this council cannot do that. That is why the DDA exists. I'm in full support of the board. They honestly work together and find options and solutions for this property that I think this council could probably learn a few lessons from. So I don't think I have to say it again, I've said it plenty of times in the past, but DDA always has my full support.
Counsel, any other questions, comments?
The, the other comment I'd make also, as your liaison from counsel, I have been very impressed with your diligence, with the group of you. You've really shown to me that you're very responsible with the charge you've been given to develop not just that property, but what I don't see lauded enough is the track record of properties that you have developed across this city. And there are a number of them. Microtel, O'Reilly's, The Dollar Store, Tractor Supply, the, the, what am I trying to think?
Trail Ridge Park.
That's the one, thank you, Trail Ridge. So there's a number of properties and so it seems like this particular property has languished a lot. I like the idea of your pressuring each group to say, okay, let's try this one, let's try that. I like that. And I'd just like to say, if we give them the support, I think that helps the city employees to also come alongside you, particularly with regards to some of the materials that I understand are already in the city waiting to get situated on that property. Boulders, trees, gravel, stuff like that. So if we're in support, I think it really helps them expedite what stuff that's already in the wings. So I also, yeah, I think yes.
That's an excellent point, if, if I may. Thank you. I forgot to mention that, you know, part of moving forward, regardless of in which direction, the DDA will likely find itself relying, at least to some degree, on city staff, as we always have, for support. And we want to be able to work in collaboration with everybody. And that staff gets the direction from your discussions, your consensus, your motions. And, and so for all of us to be on the same page really, really helps. That was an excellent point. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it very much. All right, moving on to item one B. Presentation on refreshing of the city's visual identity.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem, counsel. So about a month ago, a few council members requested a briefing on the work that's being done around refreshing the city's logo and the colors. So we want to bring that back to you tonight. I'll just introduce it real quick and then I'm going to introduce Dave Cotler, our artist, to come up and take us through the work that's been done so far. The request that we got from counsel was to help the council and folks in the audience better understand the reasons and the process for the refresh, the costs involved, who's the artist, what was the creative process, so on and so forth. So just in the way of some brief historical context, staff resumed this work. It was initiated in 2019. We did that in conjunction with the refresh of the comprehensive plan that we're going through right now. There seems to be a bit of a normal nexus between the two, I would have to say. Like I said, we, we started in 2019 on this. At the time, we were looking at a new city website. We were also looking at a new city strategic plan. So things have changed a lot. That was a few years ago, a few councils ago, a few staff members ago. We were having a hard time finding some, some answers, but we brought the best information we have on it so far. We did come up with a couple of different logo renditions. We put those out to the public as a way of community engagement on, you know, which of these do you like? Got lots of comments all over the board. So we, we held that open for a couple of weeks. We'll tell you about the results of that poll in a minute. We got lots and lots and lots of feedback and lots and lots and lots of votes on it too. I mentioned Mr. Cotler here. He's with Apex Branding and Design. He is the artist. He did the work back in 2019. He's going to walk us through the history of the project a little bit and his creative process, tell, tell you a little bit about him as requested. And then the, well, we'll go over the logo again and the color palette and all that. So I will turn it over to Dave unless there's anything at the moment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem and counsel. Really happy to be here to talk about the project. Hopefully I can be a good informational liaison since I was in the very beginning and now hopefully moving forward. I did bring a presentation. Can I put that up by chance?
Sure. Oh, Rob has it up. Here we go.
Is it up there? Okay. Is there a way I could see it here?
No, he needs to sit.
No, it's, it's.
It's coming.
Process.
There it is. And then so this.
Your presentation.
Okay. And moving from slide to slide, how do I? Just ask? Just ask, okay. All right, that sounds good. Yeah, as Michael said, I'm Dave Cotler, I've been the owner of Apex Branding and Design since 1995. And I'm actually a former resident of Woodland Park. My wife and I moved here back in 1995 and loved it, lived here for seven years and moved just after the Amen Fire, unfortunately, down to Colorado Springs and always looking for a, a way to get back up here, both for business and for, and for living, so. Basically been in business for 25 years in Colorado Springs, Woodland Park area, doing business for people from all across Southern Colorado and from, from across the US. I'm a branding and visual identity logo design specialist essentially. But my company also provides full service project management. And I've got a real small firm, so it's, offers real low overhead, so my rates are affordable and reasonable as much as possible. Next slide, please. This will give you just a brief idea of some of the work that I've done in the past and my clients that I've, that I've worked with. The Olympic Committee has been one of my largest clients and I've worked for them for over two decades, doing various projects for Olympic and, and media and public relations related projects. I did a rebranding for the World Figure Skating Museum.
I don't think this, the Zoom online is refreshing properly. The citizens are probably not seeing the same slide.
Rob, can you check that for us?
Yeah.
It's cutting it. I apologize.
That's fine, no problem.
You're trained to thought, it's just I want them to be able to follow.
Sure. Makes sense.
I think it's working now.
You've caught up now.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Portek is a company that was located for many years in Canyon City that did industrial conveyor belt turns, custom curves for conveyor belts. So I did a lot of work for them. Next slide, please. Etumos is one of my clients. They're a fairly new digital marketing agency in the Pacific Northwest. And I did a complete branding package for them. I also was tasked a few years ago to redo the Colorado Springs Pioneer's Museum logo. And that was a real fun project that came out pretty, pretty well. I was very proud of that one. And then USADA, which is the US Anti-Doping Agency, we just introduced a rebrand on that one back in late 2020. Other clients that I've worked for, Penrose St. Francis Health Services, the US Center for Safe Sport, which is the organization that deals with athletes and safety in sport. And Aspen Point, which is Colorado Springs-based mental health organization. So going back and reiterating just a little bit of what Michael said, I was contacted back in September of 2019 by Karen Casey, who was at the time the Community Engagement Officer. Karen and I had worked on a similar project, or projects in the past and then were working on a small project for the city. She asked me if I'd like to be involved in a project to evaluate the logo since they were in, in the middle of doing a new strategic plan that was also part of the website redesign project. I was tasked with an evaluation and recommendation for an updated refresh or a change of the existing city logo. So I put together a proposal and that was accepted back in November of 2019. It was divided into three phases. The first phase was called discovery and that's where I did a wide, wide range of exploration of how the logo is being used currently and how, how and why it's being used, what, what were some of the problems, what were some of the benefits of it? Also created a questionnaire to uncover some logo feedback from key stakeholders. And by that, I mean people involved in the logo process who use it every day, who work with it, who've seen it and know what works and what doesn't work. The cost for that was $1,100. It was completed and paid for in 2019. And then questionnaires were also submitted to key stakeholders. And key stakeholders at the beginning of a project like that are tech, are, tend to be people who are close to the project, close to the logo, have used it a lot, understand how it works and how it doesn't work. From there and basically grabbing the information from that, from my own exploration and also from the feedback from the questionnaires, we went into the design phase and that's where I actually put pen to paper, so to speak, for design recommendations and strategies based on the feedback we got from, from all that information. And those were included in a comprehensive presentation that was done in January of 2020. That cost was $2,250 and that was completed and paid for in 2020. And that leads us to phase three, which was, was called implementation phase. And that's where I would create what I call the deliverable assets, which are a complete set of final logo files for reproduction as needed with all sorts of execution. So whenever anybody needs a specific type of logo, it's built correctly, all the colors are established. And that also includes branding, a guidelines for use document that shows people how to use it if they're not sure what colors to use or what fonts to use. And that would be the first part of implementation. The second part of implementation is overseeing the first few executions that are usually the critical executions for brand and, and for a new visual identity and to make sure that at least at first, they're well-done and well-represented for all the work and effort that was put into it. So that's the, the concept of it. Just so you know, for, for context, in developing visual identity projects, the range, it's quite a wide range depending on who's doing the work. But for a small design firm, something like this can typically cost anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000. Larger design firms, you could be from $30,000 to $80,000. And when you use elite design firms like the Olympic Committee did for their museum, you're probably talking in the six-figure range to do something like this. Going back to the feedback that came from the questionnaire, got a lot of great feedback from people. And that's always helpful to me because it, it really sets me on the right track in terms of understanding what problems might be regarding the logo and what direction to go in. So things like it was too intricate and unclear and it didn't represent the mountain community aspect. Colors felt juvenile and a little too modern and there were some readability issues with the colors. And one funny comment was, it looks like a dog or a puppy with an orange ball by its tail, which you could sort of see too, so. That's a can't unsee moment now that you've seen it. There was further feedback too. Next slide, please. Difficulty applying the logo to various executions and applications and that it essentially wasn't successful in representing the various entities that are involved, the Aquatic Center, the Teen Center, and especially the Police Department. The logo was too complicated, includes too many elements, too many messages. We had elevate Colorado, Woodland Park, city above the cloud, so it gets a little bit convoluted. And then next slide for the last amount of feedback. A lot of people prefer the previous logo, which maybe some people haven't even seen, but it was the one below the current logo. Some people preferred something brand new. Some people felt the sun represented sort of a fearful aspect of it. But they were all looking for a combination of modern and rustic, which was sort of a common theme from, from a lot of the feedback and also to simplify. So that sort of gave me my marching orders. And from the, from a design standpoint, I needed to explore options that enhance readability and specifically added the mountain town aspect to the logo. From a simplicity standpoint, you know, develop strategies for a quicker read, simpler presentation of the logo. And design a strategy that's tiered so we can use it in certain applications, maybe a little simpler and a little more extensive, which I'll show you later how that worked out. In terms of the colors, felt like it did not have a mountain town peaceful tone to it, that it was a little more vibrant and playful. And from a tone standpoint, it just, that, those words, modern and rustic combined together came pretty loud and clear. So again, here's the, the large version of the logo that I started with. And what I felt like I wanted to do was really deconstruct it and see what about the logo could we keep that would make sense? What was working, but yet how do we evolve it to something that's maybe a little bit more appropriate and that works a little bit better? So I'll, now I'm going to take you a little bit through my process. In this instance, I worked with the existing WP. And the WP was, I'm sorry.
We've fallen behind again. It's not keeping up. The citizens cannot see them.
I apologize again.
That's okay. The project has been starting to stop.
There we are.
Okay. So the WP element that was in the, is in the original logo was done in sort of a script and a free-flowing style. And so I worked on what would be a bolder, a little bit more readable graphic representation of the similar letter forms. So I worked with a stronger one and that, and so you can see side by side what the difference is there. And then moving forward from that. Next slide. I wanted to work with the shape of it because a lot of times a square logo is a little difficult to deal with and it's a little unimaginative. So even taking the existing elements within the square and turning them into a crest or an emblem shape starts to give it a little bit of life. And then this particular instance, a little bit more welcoming, a little bit more casual and it's got a little bit more of an outdoor feel to it. The mountain was a key part of it. Obviously, you know, even in previous presentation, talking about the view of the peak, that's such an important thing up here. The peak that was used in the original design was very accurate, but it was very topographic in nature and it really didn't highlight Pike's Peak as much as it should. So as you can see from the photo below, the profile from here from Woodland Park is also very different from the profile of Pike's Peak from Colorado Springs, which sets Woodland Park apart. And so I wanted to really exemplify that. And so the simplified shape shown on the right-hand side really zooms in more to the peak and aside from the entire mountain range. Then we started working on the colors, which was to bring in a lot more realistic colors. We lost the, my recommendation right away was to lose what I call the red planet. It was a bit of a jarring and unnecessary element. Yeah, that's right. It's the dog will be unhappy, but. So anyway, the new logo works well without it because with the color change to a nice sky blue and a purple mountain majesty color, the sunshine is sort of implied, so you don't really need the sun there. So in order to make the peak stand out a little bit more too, I thought it was important to add the snow cap peaks because that's such an amazing and wonderful part of looking at the peak from Colorado Springs or from Woodland Park. So that also gives, adds some great dimension and gives that majestic feel to the, to the peak. Then I start to combine more elements, bring back the new WP, which fits perfectly within the emblem and also does something nice, which is it actually separates the design a little bit. So we've got the ability to bring in another color. And so that's why the green, representing the, you know, the grass and the tree, grass and the trees, it is a nice contrast to the purple from the mountains and the sky. And then finally, the last element, I felt like it really needed trees because that's such an important thing up here too. And so I added a symbolic trio of pines, evergreen trees, and they fit perfectly below the letter forms. And then the idea for using three trees was that it basically represents the, the key audience segments that we were trying to really represent here, which is the residents of Woodland Park, the workforce and the tourists or visitors to Woodland Park. And then the last step was to bring it all together because it was still a little bit loose in the previous slide. And then the last step was to bring it all together because it was still a little bit loose in the previous slide. But now you can see how adding a series of outer frames gives a nice compact compressed unit that gives the symbol itself a nice presence. Typography is also a big part of a logo. The previous logo had a typography that was a little bit existing, a little bit cold, a little bit institutional. So I wanted to add something that had a little bit of that mountain rustic feel to it and was good, strong and readable. And so therefore I introduced a more of a blocky serif font that would impart be good and strong to be part of the logo. And as you can see, it works really well in art form put on top of the logo. So on the left, you can see the city logo with the name. And this is where the tiered aspect of the logo comes in. You can use it just with the name and the symbol. And in the right-hand side, you can see we can actually put the name of the state in there too. So we could have different layers of recognition. Adding in the tagline, the city above the clouds, which is, you know, is such a great tagline, works perfectly just below the logo. And then I also thought it might make sense to add in what I call a heritage marker. You know, it's such, such a great and long lasting city, 1891. Sometimes it's nice to be able to use that just to sort of throw in that heritage that's so important. And this shows the side by side. And obviously they look a little bit different, but in reality, when you see the process, they actually are more of an evolution to something a little bit more appropriate, a little bit more modern, modern rustic. And does it maintain the spirit of the WP element of the first logo? It does. It enhances the prominence of Pike's Peak, whereas it was a bit hidden in the first one. The revised color palette maintains most of the equity of the blue and green, but it adjusts the tone to be a little more appropriate. And it simplifies the message, enhances readability greatly. And I think it does successfully create that modern rustic look that most people were hoping for. And then I'll just kind of go through quickly the primary logo here. We also want at this point to say, let's, you know, we need to get buy-in, we need to get feedback, we need to get enthusiasm for this new visual identity from the community. Always so important to make sure we didn't miss the mark. And so that was a suggestion to say, let's develop the secondary option, which is a little bit more what I call a forest themed design where we've got a little bit more earth tones and some forest green. Put that up next to the traditional colors that I had put in the first place and say, okay, how does this? What do people like? And so that's when we talked, Michael talked earlier about putting it up for the public vote. It was done on whatsupwoodlandpark.com for two weeks and finished on April the 12th. 433 total responses, 293 to 140, which is almost exactly two to one, which in any kind of vote is actually a pretty strong referendum for it. So the initial colors were, were much well liked. Then we decided, how do we, how do we apply this logo? How can we stretch the brand to apply it to the different entities? The aquatic center, creating a nice blue watery splashy color theme that uses the same design, but actually creates a whole different look and feel for the aquatic center. And for the police, the, the respect, the strength that we want to show for the police department, a stronger, more subtle palette, but something with a little bit more gravitas, so to speak. It also has to work really well on different applications. That's very important for a logo. You can't just have the symbol with the type underneath it for everything. Sometimes you're going to be applying it to long horizontal spaces. So again, how does it work with the name, with the tagline, with the heritage marker? And then I also superimposed some potential ideas and how does it work for the signage when you drive in town? Developing a secondary color palette to show directional signage, the blue, the purple, the gold that work really well. So we can have flexibility for applying it to different aspects of directional signage and things like that. Also this, the banners, you know, the street pole banners are such a big deal when people drive through town. On the left shows how the logo itself would work on that. But then also on the right, it's an execution that takes the actual brand system, the actual visual identity system and starts to take it apart and still work really well. So we've got Woodland Park, the name and the 1891 as a possibility against purple. Great. Still looks good, but uses all of the elements. City above the clouds with, you know, hillside with, with snow and trees. So it adds a lot of potential to apply itself to all sorts of really fun executions. And then the police department, this is a really important one. This shows how the patch could work on the officer's uniforms. Now, yeah, just the real quick feedback I got from talking to a couple of officers was they felt like it was a little too playful for the tone that the police department sort of deserves and the respect. So doing it in, in a way that allows a little bit more strength and a little bit more seriousness, I think, still gives you that same effect from the new logo, but yet it's got its own separate tone that applies a little bit more purposely to the police department. And this, by using the same font, also creates a whole separate set of extension where we can use signage for the police department, for the department signs itself. And also on the next slide, you can see for the car, you know, the, the police vehicles. And again, what we want to do is try and figure out a way to apply this without having to redo everything. So this is how it would look potentially on the cars as they currently exist without having to say, hey, we have to spend a lot of money redoing everything. And in summary, this, the stages, the community feedback, which you know, has been completed. Additional presentations, which are, you know, obviously the one this evening and whatever else, you know, I can do to help. Approval and creation of the final digital files would be the next step, along with developing our strategy and our budget and our priorities for implementation. And then creating that unveiling in the rollout with a bit of fanfare so that people can be excited about it when it actually happens. And I am available for any questions or comments?
No, I, at this point I would ask what questions council has.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Michael. Does somebody else want to start?
Go for it.
Michael, I think the, the product is great. I really do like how you got to it.
Thank you.
I love the product. The question that a couple of the council members have discussed is the cost of implementation because we, we don't know what that, we don't even have a ballpark when you change all the signs on the police vehicles, all the patches on the police uniforms, all our little badges, our, our cards, all the street signs. They're beautiful, but do we have any estimate what it would cost to roll this out?
We, we do. Yeah, we, we did. I asked the staff to come up with a list of items that would need to be replaced at some point. And a lot of the stuff like stationary, you know, we would deplete our existing stock and we, you know, we would just throw it away. For, for stuff like the, I mean, you saw the wrap on the police car. As it is right now, we kind of have a varied livery for our different cars. And so in the same way, I would imagine we would not go out and rewrap the cars until we purchase a new vehicle. We wrap them already. We wouldn't go back and take those wraps off, put new ones on. There are a series of different banners around town, some signs. The, the things that we would have replaced over time. There is, we, we do have a small marketing budget for the city, but the idea would be we would replace things over time as they wear out for the most part. Uniform patches, you know, you get new uniforms every now and then. But for the signs and all the banners that we took inventory of, about $9,000 is what I got for kind of the, the softer, softer things that would wear out a little bit more quickly. Some, some of the signs, the wooden signs, we would need to get estimates on. It's been a while since they've been replaced. My rough estimate would probably be in the 10, 10, $15,000 range over time. Many of our signs don't actually have the current city logo on them. So that's, the, the rough ballpark would probably be 10, 20, $25,000 over a series of years. But again, as much as possible as stuff wears out.
And that's always the case, whenever you introduce a new logo, you're always going to have stuff that's either just been purchased with the old logo and things like that. So the idea is always to make it as painless as possible in terms of the initial investment so that you do roll it out little by little and maybe just choose a few key items to, you know, to, to implement the funds with on the first unveiling of it.
Kind of a phased approach instead of all at once.
May I?
Yeah, exactly.
I agree with what council member Neil said, the product is fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
I'm really glad we had this presentation because it gave a lot of background to this logo and all the different applications for it that I don't think we were aware of. We just basically got a new logo and, and seeing that process and, and how that is all incorporated and the thought that went into it. I really enjoyed the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Part of this came about my understanding with conversations I've had about how this rebranding somewhat was prompted was the comments about the fact that there are a number of different logos around town. And I've seen this process happen in the city before where we've updated logos and updated logos. And that that was part of what prompted this rebranding idea was that we had a number of different logos already in the city, trying to make it cohesive and one logo. But when we look at the implementation cost, I, I thought just alone about the signs that we have out on the street, I would have never thought about the police badges or the police cars. When we look at the cost of implementation, and I don't think this council would be very favorable to spend a lot of money literally replacing every single logo we have in this town. I feel like we're actually adding to the problem that this was prompted by, which was the fact that we already have a number of different logos out there. And since we can't, we aren't in a financial situation to go ahead and implement this logo across everything immediately, getting rid of all the other existing logos. We're only continuing to add to the initial problem of having a disjointed branding within our city. So that's, that's my concern. I do love the product. I just, I, I think it's counterintuitive to actually what we're, exactly what we were trying to get away from.
Is okay, I can respond?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I totally understand what you're saying. It's, that's always the case too, when, you know, when you get involved in projects like this, you find stragglers. When I did my pretty extensive drive around for a couple of days, taking pictures of where I saw the logo being used, I really only ever saw one logo that was different from the square, the current square logo. So I didn't see a lot of old logos. I know there's different entities that have slightly, that have the name Woodland Park in it that's different. I think the, what is it, the commit or the tourist tourism board perhaps or something. But from my perspective, I didn't see a lot of other logos. And in fact, I had to hunt for that older one to find it because I didn't find that implemented anywhere. So my impression was that there actually was a lot less fragmentation in terms of seeing other logos than there is. And it seemed like they were all pretty consistently the, the bright colored one that, that we see. I mean, maybe that, maybe I just didn't see them all, but I did a pretty extensive research on it. So I'm not sure it's as extensive as you're, as you're saying, but maybe it's just stuff that I haven't seen too. And then anytime you try to, you know, try to, to put in a new logo, you're always going to do it in phases. So you'll have that, a little bit of that straggler syndrome, so to speak. But the, the, use the benefit of the new one coming in. And I know that disregards a little bit the budget part of it, but in terms of the goodwill and also the ability to, to sell things to tourists with a new logo that's a lot more attractive, which in this case seems to be, could also help to make up for some of that information too. Because people are a lot more likely to bring something back with them if they visit or to proudly wear if they are a resident or someone working here, if they really like the logo. And, and really one of the big feedbacks we got was the current logo is eh. So I guess it's, it's a sort of a, you know, where do you, where do you weigh the importance of adding that great goodwill, allowing yourself a little bit more option for generating revenue and income and also creating goodwill and, and just people feeling good about the city themselves. And also maybe applying those initial funds to the things that people see when they first come into town. So the city, the city signs, the entry signs like I had marked up and things like that, where some of the other things that are still available and still around are less noticeable. So they're not going to be obvious fragmentation from the old one.
So the entrepreneur in me says that if it's 20 to $25,000, we could do a fundraiser, maybe through some organization like Main Street, who also needs some funds and print some T-shirts, some polo shirts, some beanies, some gloves. And if every quick calculation, if we had 8,000, 8,000 residents each spending $15 for one of those products, that would be about 120 grand. So we could cover the, the rebranding. A little bit of funds to some of our organizations that needed and somehow, because we don't have it in the budget, just as a thought, as we don't have in the budget, we just commit to it coming out of fundraiser of product that sold. Just a thought.
Sorry, another question. As far as where we are in the process so far, where was the funding for that allocated from and, and how much has been spent? How did that come about? Remind me of the history.
3,300, I think was the math I saw.
Yeah, it's 3250 or something, yeah.
Yeah, it's looks, it looks like 3350.
33.
And those, some of that was spent in 20, some of that was spent in 2019, some of that was spent in beginning of 2020. And the remaining phase for the design that Mr. Collerwood put together is 15, 1500 and $2,000. The city does have a marketing and branding, a small marketing and branding budget. It would, we would use to complete this work. So most of it has already been done. Again, that's why, why now it's, it's a sunk cost at this point for that first 3350.
Great presentation. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Sure. Any further questions or comments?
Just a comment to Michael, if you could develop the entrepreneur idea and maybe come back. It would go a long way in my mind.
Yeah.
Well, don't lose sight of the, the phenomenal expense is in the future over time.
Correct.
What we're looking at right now is do we let him finish his logos and give them to us? Or does it all just go down the drain? That's, that's why we're here right now.
So we have to make a motion on this? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No.
No, but that's the purpose of this presentation is do we allow this professional to finish his product, which we have already put almost $4,000 into?
Oh, I see.
Or do we let that $4,000 just go down the drain and we do nothing?
And that was that slide that had something like 23, what was the unpaid for amount?
The unpaid for?
Yes.
1500 to 2,000 is what we're imagining.
So I just, just wanted to refocus counsel on that's the large expenses down the road and I understand your concerns. But the main concern at this moment is do we allow him to finish his product? Or do we, yeah, do we let him waste his time and we just wasted money?
I would be in favor of, of him completing the project and, and having the deliverables brought forward to the city.
Right. And this is just the presentation so we can bring that issue back to the agenda to vote on. So there's no vote.
As far as consensus, I, I give.
But my question.
It's already in the budget.
I was going to say, isn't it already in the budget? So.
It's been part of the budget process. It's appropriated within your existing 2021 appropriation. So.
Yes, technically it doesn't have to come back to the agenda if we have consensus today.
It was intended to be a briefing.
Yeah. Yeah. So we can have consensus or not?
Yes.
You have my consent.
Nice to move forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Rusty, you might want to speak into your mic for the audience.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think Stephanie and I kind of talked beforehand and we had some long term expensive cost concerns, which we can always discuss later. But it'd be a terrible waste to have spent X amount of dollars and, and not complete it. So I would, in terms of a consensus, I would give you a thumbs up on completing the project personally.
Thank you.
Without voting.
The other thing about the, the future expense is no matter what, if we buy a new police car or a banner breaks down or, you know, a police uniform comes in and needs new patches, we still have to, we still have the expense for those logos as is to create them. So we're either going to create them with the new logo or the old logo. But either way, we still maintain that expense as well. So, okay, so do we have consensus then to move forward? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is item 1C. And I'm going to ask counsel, if you all don't mind, with item 1C, we also have agenda item under. If you all don't mind, with item one C, we also have agenda item under new business ten A. And that is to approve the resolution that Mr. Angle is going to. Present to us. And instead of making him wait all the way until ten A, if you guys wouldn't mind moving that on the agenda. To follow his presentation so that he can be present for that. I think that that would be courteous to him. So is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Do you want to just address item four then now? I'm okay if you want to propose additions, deletions and corrections now. Address that in that part and then we don't have to go back to it. If there's anything else, I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda as well.
Well, I know Suzanne had wanted to do a quick demo of the timestamp under that. So, and she's waited, I think, three or four council sessions to be able to do that. So let's just, I appreciate.
That's consent calendar.
Yeah. Oh, you want to do additions, deletions. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Sure, we can do that real quick. So. Yes.
We, we can just have a consensus.
Yeah. Yes, I, I consent.
We have to vote on everything.
Definitely, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Angle, you'd like to present?
Don Anjel, Director, Emergency Management, Teller County. Here.
Okay.
Okay. Here to give you a brief update on the Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was a process we started literally almost two years ago. When I came to council and invited. Not only Woodland Park, but Cripple Creek, Victor, Special Districts to be part of. A hazard mitigation plan. This plan is required to be updated at least every five years. With this, what it does is it provides a commitment to reduce the risk. Hosted by the hazards that is appropriate for your communities. It's a comprehensive and inclusive planning process. That seeks input from all entities, both collectively and then singularly. This plan, this twenty-twenty plan. Had actually jurisdictional annexes for each one of the municipalities. As well as the special districts that chose to participate. What that means to you, and we explained this as we started the process. If you would like to have access to potential FEMA mitigation funds. You must have a comprehensive hazard mitigation plan. That's been adopted both by the community, then by the state and by FEMA. The process actually works somewhat reverse. We put the document together, we submit it to the state for comment. Who then submits it to FEMA for final approval. Then we come back and we ask the jurisdictions for their singular approval to their annexes. I have to say that. Robin Lindbergh and Andy LeBrand and Darren were key people in. Participating in fulfilling the city's obligation for their share of the expense. So it worked out that none of our jurisdictions in the county actually had paid a penny. Your contributions, chief, thank you. Through the participants covered the in-kind twenty-five percent manage. What's key and critical again about this is. As we get input and develop some mitigation strategies. It also helps, like I said, with your organization to reach out. Either collectively or singularly to obtain FEMA mitigation funds. If you don't adopt it, which is your choice. You're not eligible for FEMA mitigation funds. Now or within the next five years. So this was a plan that we reached out, like I said, and got the buy-in. From all the communities to participate. The first plan in which that occurred. So as we go forward, your turn.
Rob took it from me. He's doing it.
Let him go.
Perfect.
He didn't trust me.
What changed? Yeah, didn't even see it. This plan from twenty fifteen, some of the updates. DHSEM, Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management. With the state set out new guidelines, very different than in twenty fifteen. They also revised the risk assessment to discuss recent hazard events. And changing conditions that may have resulted in increased hazards. Or decreased vulnerabilities. Yet we had to add the pandemic. Lucky thing, twenty fifteen never could have occurred. Twenty nineteen, it did. It also revised the mitigation strategies with an emphasis on actions. That are focused on reducing long-term risk reduction. In other words, FEMA is tired of paying for time after time after time. Incidents and events that people didn't take mitigative action. They are not going to in the future. It expanded the mitigation strategy to consider the FEMA lifelines and state resiliency prioritization. And we added the jurisdictional annexes for each one of our partners. Of which Woodland Park is one of them. And again, I'll emphasize, you don't have to adopt it, but you're cutting your own throat. If you want mitigation funds in the next five years. And we don't know what's coming. So some of the hazards that were ranked, and this was not based upon a single individual. But this was based upon L E P C, local emergency planning committee. It was HOA, HPO, and these private citizens. All the special districts as well as community members. They're the ones that ranked the probability, the magnitude, the onset. And the duration in order to give an average of what people felt were the highest risk. Where we stand. FEMA approved it, three, three of twenty-one. Adoption by Teller County, we had to do a adoption. All we did was adopt initially so that we could submit it to the state. We were up against a time crunch. FEMA gave no relief for COVID. So you either did it, got it done. Or lost your grant money that paid for it. Colorado Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management approved it, sent it to FEMA. The jurisdictional updates were hoping five, six, twenty-one, Woodland Park passes it. Sally, thank you. Appreciate it greatly. Victor adopted it, three eighteen, Cripple Creek, April seventh. Four Mile is actually adopting it this Thursday. So they will pick up theirs. They were one of the special districts that definitely realized. The risks and hazards in the southern part of the county. And as you know, there's not much out there for fire protection. So they have some very good projects identified. I'd like to again emphasize, any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Becky Frank, my deputy, she's with her son at the school. It's not a play. It's whatever the school's doing tonight. Her son comes first, somebody you can relate, otherwise she'd be here. She's the one that put it together, but again, I have to tell you, Miles, Robin, Andy did a fantastic job. They were at multiple meetings, so multiple, like a year and a half's worth. So with that, I'm gonna ask that as it's presented, I think Sally. You presented the resolution, you please consider adoption. This is for your benefit and the benefit of your citizens.
Thank you, Don.
You bet.
Council, do you have any questions or comments for Don before Sally comes up to present?
So Don, firstly, I'd just like to say thank you for all the work you did for the county with COVID preparations and battening down the hatches. I know that you worked overtime many, many hours to make that happen. So thank you for your. Commitment to our region to really keep things on track, particularly with all the bureaucratic federal stuff, which you seem to do real well at. I only, and I, it's, it's very minute. But under the FEMA B one on page five of the document for Woodland Park. It asks us if this informant, does the plan include information on previous occurrence of hazard events? And the probability of future habit events in the city of Victor? Is that just a typo meaning to be? And I guess they're gonna fix it in the, in the final.
Our contractor has already got it fixed for final adoption.
Yeah, the rest is, it's very detailed, uh, what you've gone through. I, I see the over concern of how FEMA approaches stuff like, you know, earthquakes is a real serious problem here. And, you know, it's like, oh, and it's global warming that's going to cause that. I don't necessarily agree with their conclusions, but I understand the work and, and the framework you've laid. So, yeah, it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council, any further questions, comments? All right. Sally, are you prepared to just present the resolution for us then?
Yes.
Good evening. Resolution eight seventy-five, series twenty-twenty-one. Has three recitals that begins with an appreciation for the assistance with the police department. In helping to gather information and preparing the Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is prepared in accordance with the state requirements. The Emergency Management Office did host a public meeting on November tenth, twenty twenty. Which afforded the public to provide comments to the plan. And that this plan is to be updated no less than five years. So with that, be it resolved that the City of Woodland Park Council. Adopt the twenty-twenty Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Woodland Park Jurisdiction Annex. As the plan for Woodland Park and resolves to execute the actions in the plan as adopted this evening. And I apologize that this was not in your packet, but was sent out to you this afternoon.
Thanks, Sally. Suzanne, for the motion, do you want me to, do you want the whole resolution read? Or do you want it read after?
I don't think it needs the whole resolution. Sally did a fine job of summarizing it. We'll just need the motion that you have listed on your agenda.
Right. Okay. So can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution eight seventy-five, adopting the twenty-twenty Teller County Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented.
Second.
Al Fiery?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your presentation, Don. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mike. Very nice to meet you too. And I know I've met Rusty.
We'll get you a signed copy.
Okay, thank you. And I did check Sally's to make sure it didn't say Victor.
Oh. We got an old copy, right?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item number five, consent calendar.
Oh, you have, ma'am, you have D.
What did I do?
Three D.
Three D. I skipped three D. Cause I wrote right over it when I was taking notes. I'm just so excited to get done. I'm, I'm sorry. So item one D, that'll be council vacancy discussion. And I'm gonna go ahead and open it to the floor for council, if there is any member who would like to start the discussion.
I will.
Go for it.
All right. So, Nina, I'd like to start with a question to you, just for clarification. So last council, we had a draw between a, one of the candidates and a note, and none of the candidates. And the way by tabling our, our procedure to bring it back to the next council, that basically made that. Not something that we have to do. But if I understand it. As we look from now till election day at the options we have for the mayoral seat. We either re-bring this to the table and interview or revisit a motion to have a vote. We leave the mayor pro tem in. Acting mayor. We hold a special election. And so those are our three, is that correct? Those are our three options or is there something that I'm missing?
I can't think of any additional options unless the city clerk can.
I think you named them all.
Yeah.
Okay. So if that's the case, then we have a vacancy for a council member and we have a vacancy for a mayor. We, if I understand the way the charter reads, we can make two appointments. We can make two appointments on council, correct? At any time without having to go to a special election.
Correct.
Okay. So then if. The only appointment we can make. Well, the way, the way I see it is we can have interviews or simply just appoint a. Or do we have to have interviews or can we simply appoint a council member? The way it now sits in the charter.
You can make an appointment, but it's best your practice, follow your practice, which I believe is to. Submit application.
Submit applications.
Or like propose applications on that website and everything.
So is that different than how it was for mayor? Cause we could actually just have gone up to somebody in the community and said, would you like to be mayor? And if we all agreed on it, that person could be mayor.
There's no difference. It's just, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay. So either way is, is an acceptable thing. So. If we leave. Mayor pro tem in position as mayor, that doesn't open up her seat, does it?
No.
Not unless you're appointed and you, and we already had that vote and that didn't happen. So, so we can't do three appointments. We can't appoint her to mayor, fill her seat and fill Jim Pfaff's seat, can we?
No.
Right. So only two of them. Okay. So we have, we have the ability of getting business done with five of us. But my last question then for you, Nina, is. But my last question then for you, Nina, is, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
You can call me here.
I don't know where.
You can call me here.
Okay, good. Is then the charter was changed in April to say that we, to remove the thirty days. We have, so a gym seat was vacated. And the charter used to say thirty days. It no longer says thirty days for that, for us to shall appoint. It just says we shall appoint. So what does that mean? Thirty days, sixty days, a year, leave it till the next election? I mean, what is it kind of, what are we obligated to? What are we obligated to?
So yeah, if you amended it to, if I'm reading what Suzanne had sent around, a vacancy shall be filled by majority vote of the remaining council after the vacancy occurs, provided there will not be a regular election within ninety days of the vacancy, which there isn't right now. And yeah, that's, you, doing nothing is an option, if that, that answers your question. It says if the council fails to reach a majority vote, you may call a special election, provided there's not an election within ninety days.
So that's a may, but a shall, to me, at least legally, I always thought shall meant, shall, you gotta do it. So if we gotta do it, but there's no time limit and you're telling us we don't have to do it, I'm legally confused.
It's not an optimal option to do nothing. Yes, it says a vacancy shall be filled by the majority vote after such vacancy occurs. And then you did take away the time limit, probably just because of, you know, to not put yourself in such a time crunch. It wouldn't be advisable to do nothing. I was just going through the options. But it just says a vacancy shall be filled by majority vote of the mayor and the council after such vacancy occurs.
And if we can't reach a majority vote?
Then you may call a special election.
May. Then may comes in.
Then may comes in.
Or we can wait till the next scheduled election.
Technically, yeah. And another option too, just to throw it out there is we don't have to necessarily take applications and interview. We can also come to a consensus that we could take the person who had the second highest votes in the last election that was given by the people and we could appoint that person. Just, I'm just throwing it out there, cause it's another option. So. But, or, or do nothing, or are other three options. So.
It's wide open.
Yeah. Yeah, it's wide open. And if there's consensus that we don't want to take applications, we don't have to. So I, I don't think that's the best decision, but if we can function at five and get business done, there's no harm in that either. Cause what's most important is that we're getting business accomplished.
May I?
Absolutely.
I, I'm inclined to the do nothing position. We've already attempted to appoint a mayor and have found that we cannot do that. We may be able to appoint a council member and then we end up with a six-person council and tie votes again. That was a fun process. I also consider every time we add or remove someone from this council, it changes the dynamics. We have had a hard enough time up here with that. And I think we're finally finding our groove for better or for worse. We have eleven months left before all of this changes anyways. And I think we have a lot in front of us. We have managed to find some common ground. And again, putting ourselves in the situation of a six-person even number council tie votes and changing up the dynamics on council even more when it's already taken us six months to get to the point we're at. I think we're, we're best served to continue on with an odd number and just get back to business finally.
I'll say, I agree. My only concern is because I'm mayor pro tem and only acting mayor, should I need to miss a meeting? You guys will have to decide who will run the meeting, which I'm sure can be accomplished. But if we had a sixth person, we could possibly appoint the mayor position and then appoint, and then move to a mayor pro tem, so that if I were ever absent, we would know who's running. But that's just a side note. That's not a. And there might be some things in your charter, but I think there's some statutory provisions that it's a percentage of the governing board. There's been a lot of, you know, well, there's been, I guess, conflict as to whether that means is that five or seven, you know, your full governing board. But I just know some statutes have like two-thirds of the governing board or, you know, that's just one thing, another thing to consider. Yeah, the other issue is if any one of us is absent, do we still have a quorum then? If there's only four of us for that council meeting? Unless, um, you guys have, is the, is the quorum of the full governing board or is it? Meaning the five or the seven?
It's a quorum of the set, of the full governing board. So it'd be a quorum, a quorum of, right.
Four will be fine. One person could miss, but not two. It's not three out of five, cause it's the majority. It's four out of seven. Right. Okay, good. That's good. So if one of us has a vacation or something. And we're also working with the city attorney on a side note to be able to participate by Zoom, should we be ill or absent on vacation. So that'll help immensely. So.
Which I hope is coming along, because I'm.
Yes, it should be. We should have it by next council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so two things on that. It, it, it sounds like that if we, if we were to explore calling a special election, that's gonna cost us, if I remember, Suzanne, you said something like twenty thousand dollars or something.
Yes, it was coordinated.
So we have to look at whether that's even justifiable responsibly to do that. But the other side is what as, as Councilwoman Alfieri was, I'm just get all the pieces right. Councilwoman Alfieri says there's gonna be a bunch of vacancies come a year from now or eleven months, aren't there? Aren't there like?
Three.
Five, no, five seats. I think Councilmember Neil and myself are the only two that are in for another additional two years. Everyone, everyone else has either filled a seat or whatever. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hillary and I have been in that position.
You have?
Yes.
Well, the other thing is if, if you wanna move forward with a consensus this evening that you don't feel you want to put out an application, that's fine. But at any point in time, we can revisit that too. So if, if we feel we aren't functioning and a sixth member would be super helpful, then we can put out the application.
So I have to say, Stephanie, that I agree with you completely. I won't say anymore because you said it very nicely and said what was on my mind. So I agree with that, actually, at this time.
Yeah. And I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Labarre. I mean, we're not locking ourselves in. We can, you know, heaven forbid, we find ourselves in a position of not having a lot to do and not a lot of business. We can revisit this. But we're not, it's not an all or nothing at this point. We can, we're leaving the option open for us going forward if we find it's necessary or prudent to do so.
Right. I think the citizens may be surprised by that decision. But I also think they may be surprised to realize how well we may function going forward with five of us.
I guess the only comment I would say is I hope the citizens who have been paying attention over the past year have kinda seen how the votes have gone, where there's been a kind of a grouping of four and then a grouping of three, and then as it changed, a grouping of three and three, kinda traditionally. So when I hear Ms. Alfieri, Stephanie, say she's comfortable with it, knowing that if you look historically back, you kinda have, would be putting yourself in a minority position and you're still comfortable. What you're saying to me is you trust the, the five people that are left, that we do work together, cause we've been behind the scenes negotiating. We've been behind the scenes in executive sessions. And she has seen and has a comfort level that even in a historically based, but not necessarily going forward, that you're comfortable with the five, because I'm very comfortable with the five, an odd number. And I kind of feared what would happen if we went to the, an even number. You don't know what, you know, the grass isn't always greener on the other side. You don't know who that sixth person might be that could cause gridlock again. So to see yourself and Robert saying what you're saying puts me in a very comfortable position with, maybe we just leave it as is, five person. And we see how well we function and then maybe come back to a later decision. If we're dysfunctional still, as the citizens see us, maybe we do go back for a sixth member. But I, I think they're gonna see a very different city council going forward. Thank you.
Sure.
Rusty, I'm not sure that you interpreted all of what I said. I am simply saying that I don't think it's reasonable to call for a special election and incur that expense. I am, I will watchful of how we proceed with five. And I'm certainly keeping my options open to filling, filling both of those seats. So, because I would like to see us function with seven. We, I don't think, have we ever had seven?
We can't have seven.
Yeah, we can't have seven.
There won't be a way to get to seven.
Unless we would hold a special election for one of the.
No, we would just revisit the vote again for, for mayor as well.
No, so what would happen is we would appoint, we could.
It was only two, right.
We could appoint someone to Pfaff's position.
Right.
And then if you appointed me to the mayor position, my council position then still remains open. And the only way we could fill that is through a special election.
No, there's one other option. And that is vote again for a, someone to fill the mayor position.
We can't. We could hold a special election.
No, well, I don't know. Nina, is that correct or?
Or anyone could be, yeah, you could have voted.
If, if we, we have the candidates, at least in my mind, we have the candidates. And we couldn't revisit it in our standard way of voting again the next meeting. But we could certainly come back and say, we will have mayoral candidates again and we'll vote again. And we could fill that position.
You mean take applications.
New applications.
Because a vacancy would be created if you were to become the mayor. Is that what the question is?
No, no, no. I'm saying two, we can, we can fill seven. We can fill the seven council. And I'm, I'm open to that. I'm open to the five, by the way, for the moment. But we can still fill those two positions and be within the charter, be within charter.
Yeah. You mean if one's mayor. He means to reintroduce the applications for mayor.
That is what it.
And I would stay in my position. And we could appoint. Correct. Yeah, we're on the same page, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that is a probability as well. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, so I think we have consensus that we, this time, we are not going to accept applications for the position to fill the vacant council member seat. Is that correct? Okay. All right. And now I'll try not to skip any more numbers, but I probably will.
Five, you're right. You're good.
All right. So we're at five now? We're, no, we're back, we did.
Yeah, we're considered.
We did four.
We did four. You're good.
Yep. Thanks. So we are at five and five A.
Okay.
And then Suzanne, we'll let you do your demo if you'd like.
Sure. I have the demo prior to the, the approval of the minutes.
Oh, do your demo. Do it.
This is the long awaited, anticipated.
Drumroll.
It's so, I, what we wanted to do, we wanted to show the city council and show the public how easy it is to access the minutes on the city website. So I'm just going to pull up the city website and share my screen. Can I share my screen, Rob? Thank you. Okay. Can everyone see that?
See, you're pretty good.
We see you. Looking good. Technology. Oh, it's happening.
Okay.
There it is.
So everyone is familiar with the city homepage, the webpage.
Yes.
So we get to the beginning of the city webpage. We go to city government, which you see listed here. And you, the council and the audience and people at home will click on the agendas and minutes. You click on the agendas and minutes. And it takes you to all of our boards and commissions that we have and all of their agendas and minutes. But for the sake of speaking about the city council minutes, we'll go to the city council. And for instance, you will see the May sixth meeting, which is tonight's meeting. If you go there to the download and you hit the agenda, the whole packet will appear for tonight's meeting. And this is what council is. Pardon me?
I said all thirty-one.
Yeah.
It gets short.
Oh, this is nothing.
Maybe a hundred and fifty.
Ask Mr. Butterey, the amount of pages we've had packets before, right? Many, many more. But for sake of this evening, I'd like to show you, here are the city council minutes. And if you look at the minutes, you'll see, Rob, how do I get that?
Just a bar at the bottom, at the bottom. See, see your bar at the bottom? Just push it to the right.
Yep.
There you go. Grabbing.
Got it.
We have, we have remedial classes later.
I'm sorry. If you go to the city council minutes, for instance, you will look here and say you're looking at the minutes and you wanna see all about the appointments to the planning commission. We have now put in a timestamp for you. So when you're looking at the minutes, all you need to do is click on this timestamp and it will start the city council meeting after this ad.
Oh, God. You have no control over that, do you, Suzanne?
Sorry. That was embarrassing.
Suzanne, you have no control.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know what the ad would be. Anyhow, you see, here we are to the section of the council minutes that refer to the video, that show the video of when we discussed the planning commission appointments. Just, that's my quick little demo on, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of questions on how to see the council minutes, the meetings through the minutes. So just quickly wanted to do that for everybody. So thank you for your time.
And below that was all of the records of those meetings. So they could click on one of the previous meetings. Is that correct?
Yes, I can.
You're not sharing anymore, so.
So.
So if you wanna see, you click on the camera, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where you click in, here's all of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful meetings, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, any meeting and any documentation or videos are there with it. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. That, that makes it really easy. So that's great. We're actually using technology in a useful manner.
It's quite entertaining as well.
I didn't even know what that was an ad for. I started laughing so hard. I didn't even, I covered my face.
She was adjusting something.
Okay, let's move on.
So I, I, I make a motion to approve the April fifteenth regular city county, county minutes as presented.
Oh, excuse me, before, before we read the minutes into the record, I do have two minor corrections to the minutes. I had sent them to the council earlier in the week and I need to, for the record, read them out loud. So we have two corrections to the minutes. The first one was page two of the minutes where it was the motion to suspend resolution number three thirty-nine, which was the one for the tie vote. It should have read Case made the motion and Alfieri seconded it with the motion carrying five to one with Zulawaga voting no. The second correction was page five of the minutes, approval of resolution number eight seventy-four. The vote was five to one with Alfieri voting no, not council member Zulawaga. So I just have to say that before we read them into the record. They've been amended and so I would ask for the motion to adopt the amended minutes.
All right. So I make a motion to approve the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting minutes as. minutes as amended by City Clerk Leclerc. I'll second it Suzanne.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. I do know that we have one speaker here this evening.
Yes, and I have a sign up sheet as well.
Okay, and then I noticed we have ten minutes before we take our break at nine. So we'll go ahead and let the speakers speak and then we'll take our break.
Okay, the first person I have signed up is Mac. Mac, you didn't put an item number, so I'm assuming it's on something not on the agenda, correct?
In a manner of speech.
Okay.
And I also noticed we do have a hand up on Zoom, so we will get to that person as well.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Mac McVicker, thirteen seven one nine Hetty Road, Woodland Park, Colorado. I'm chairman of the Board of Review. I don't know how many of you know what we do. But we adjudicate variance request when a permit holder feels they have failed an inspection and they shouldn't have failed it. And we hear both sides. So I have a question. I'd like to see a show of hands by the elected officials in front of me. How many of you have ever read any part of any building code that Woodland Park follows? One, two, three. Councilman Alfieri, which one have you read, the I B C, I R C?
Oh, I don't know them that well. Yeah. But I have I have seen them, but no, do I pretend to be an expert at it? Absolutely.
No, I'm not asking for an expert. Which one have you read? Not asking for the details inside the document.
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, Councilman Case?
I've read back on staff. I have read many documents and many things that have been reviewed by both planning commission and council over the years with regards to development and code related to that.
Okay.
So it would have been out of the city's code itself.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I flipped through most of it probably because I've had to get permits for building and make sure that I was doing the right thing and make sure my contractors were following things, pulling their permits.
Very good. So how many of you know, what would you say happens if we did not have a Board of Review? What happens to the building department with no Board of Review?
Ultimate power.
You don't have a building department anymore. We are required by code to have a Board of Review in order to have a building department, whether it be under Teller County, as it used to be, or if we're under P P R B D as we are now. And I can read you chapter and verse here, and it's also in our city ordinance. Why am I bringing this up? I'm trying to fill vacancies on the Board of Review. I've been asking, almost begging, cajoling, arm twisting. And I get one consistent answer from qualified people. They don't want to come up in front of this city council. And I'm talking to you collectively and be badgered with questions that have nothing to do with their qualifications. So I'm asking you, when you have qualified candidates up here, not just for Board of Review, but the other volunteer positions, please put your prejudices, your biases, your preconceived notions aside and treat these people with respect and ask them meaningful questions as to their qualifications and not necessarily their beliefs, how they look, anything like that. You've made my job very difficult. And if you get a couple of more resignations from the Board of Review, you the city will no longer be able to issue permits. And how would you like to face every builder in town in this room upset with you because you're not able to make an objective decision? I know you're elected. I'm appointed, you can fire me tonight if you want to. But I'm asking you, please throw some objectivity into your decision making here. You have openings on planning, you have opening on Board of Review, you have other openings. But the Board of Review is the only one that has to exist in order for a part of this city to function. I don't know if you knew that, so my talk tonight is part educational. Now, I'm not asking you to vote for the next person that comes up here for Board of Review just because I've expressed my concern. But they don't want to come up here and be badgers. And these aren't, you know, your wimpy guys, these are muscular builders, some of them almost twice my size. So please, pardon? Could be women too, correct? And we had women on our board initially. Let me just tell you what what this board has done. Woodland Park Board of Review carved out exceptions when we adopted the twenty fifteen code that was put in the twenty seventeen R B D manual. We are the only building department out of the eight or nine departments that they have jurisdiction over that got those carve outs. I need the help of people that want to serve on this board that have experience. But they're afraid to come forward. We're going to go through this process again next year. We do it on a six year cycle. So we're on the twenty fifteen code book. The twenty twenty one has come out, Sally's going to talk about that later tonight. And sometime in twenty twenty two, P P R B D is going to come to Woodland Park and say, what do you want? We want you to accept all this, and we're going to push back on some of this stuff. We're the only building department under P P R B D that has pushed back and gotten these carve outs. So please, help me continue supporting this town by thinking objectively and 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 put aside, I don't vote for regs, and I don't do this, I don't do that. And instead, show some real leadership. I've been in the military eight and a half years, including a tour in Vietnam. Rusty, you had twenty what? Twenty two years. And I got to tell you, folks, I'm just being honest, and I hope for your own benefit. Don't be afraid to show leadership in your positions here. That's what the people elected you for. We need you to do that. We need to keep this city functioning. Because if this Board of Review loses two or three more members, you no longer have a building department until you appoint some people. And your record on appointments lately, and I'm talking to you collectively, hasn't been that great. You discussed this amongst yourselves earlier. And the analogy I like to draw, how many of you have ever been in a canoe? What happens if one end of that canoe sinks, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Case?
You go all the way down to the bottom.
The other end sinks too.
Yes, it does.
So collectively, you are in a canoe. And at times, I'm speaking honestly here, I hope you take it in the manner in which I want it received. You forget you've been in a canoe. And you pride yourself on, hey, I helped the deadlock tonight, or I didn't vote, or whatever. We've got to see a change on that. Yeah, you think, well, five people, three, two, won't be any more tie votes. You still have the option of abstaining and still having a tie vote. That's not going to further the agenda of this town, of this public, when it comes to things like the building department. So thank you for my five minutes of glory or whatever. Please take to heart what I've said here tonight. You're in a canoe. And you've got to remember that and help this town move forward by providing real, honest leadership instead of dogmatic positions. Any questions?
Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Point taken.
I appreciate your comments. I have heard the opposite from some citizens. I have heard some citizens commend us on being more careful in vetting the appointments that we make to the boards and commissions that in previous years were basically rubber stamped. So it's hard to balance both of those. I don't think this council has badgered any applicants to any of the boards or commissions. Perhaps the fact that we are now vetting them more carefully and closely and asking real substantive questions regarding the appointments that they're applying for might might appear new, might appear out of the blue because that is something that hasn't been done, might appear a little more harsh and a little more in depth. But I don't think that we have badgered any of the applicants. And I will continue to make sure that they're fully vetted. There is a big difference between appointing someone to the keep Woodland Park Beautiful Board versus the Board of Adjustments Board, sorry, Board of Adjustments Board of Review that oftentimes will deal with very serious private property rights issues. So looking at the boards and the applicants, there are different levels, absolutely, of qualifications for those. The other comment I'd like to make as well is, just so that everyone is aware, there are very, very, very few instances in which a council member is allowed to abstain from a vote. So we can't just decide not to vote. So the idea that we would end up with another tie as an odd numbered council is highly unlikely except for in very specific cases.
Thank you for that clarification.
I'm going to just remind council, Mac, your point is very well taken. And there were some people up for appointment last time where it did get personal, some comments got personal, speaking of privilege and a number of other things. And I think Mac's point is, try to keep it not personal, just keep it professional. And that's, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mac.
Just a comment for Mac.
Sure.
Please stay, we're going to go into a break in just a second. I do actually have a question for for eight A.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Rusty, I couldn't understand the last part of what you said.
I will have a question for you on agenda item eight A, so.
I'll be here.
Please stay, thank you.
I will.
Thank you.
So we, council, do you want to take the break now? Or do you want to go ahead and let our other two people who are signed up to speak?
Can we do it in five minutes so we can be respectful of the people that are here?
Do what?
A break?
You want to take a break now?
It's on our.
Okay.
It's time. I mean, if we're going to take one, can we?
But yeah, can we make it five minutes? Thank you. I will do sorry.
It's almost nine oh four.
And I have to accept, we have two more resigning.
Seriously?
Yeah, we're down to four. Jan and Suzie, the chair and vice chair.
Specifically for this event. And but the Main Street organization is the one that actually puts together the downtown cleanup. So and and we utilize a couple of city staff people on Friday mornings to help us haul away all this wonderful dirt that we have to sweep up. So we can't do it without partnering with the city and with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. So it is a collaborative work.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Gail.
Next, we have Elijah Murphy.
Elijah Murphy, two zero four West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. I own the historic Uden. And I'll tell you what, I I realize this was on the agenda, but I like the pointy back puppy way better than I like the humpy back puppy. He looks way better. And the colors are prettier, too. But nonetheless, not on the agenda was the veterans rally coming up in August. And I understand we're having some issues with that. So I'm going to offer up my services as a community organizer to help make it happen. I have a lot of backing already from people who are going to help cut down on the cost of policing the event. And I've always been very sharing with the farmers market. I've always let them use my parking areas. And I kind of got to thinking about, you know, the way things are. Thankfully for attorneys, there's no such thing as settled law as we saw earlier. But the opening stanza, we live in the shadow of America's mountain, where the unofficial theme song for America was written. It's not our national anthem, but there were a lot of people that wanted it to be. And it kind of went, oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesties above the fruity plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. All right. I almost got a little bit of a feeling. All right, I'll I'll let you know right now. Mr. Weir called me and expressed his concerns about the lack of support. People have already invested a lot of money into this. He was, I guess, told to basically go forth and do great things. And then it's where all of us vets are sitting out here going, oh, yeah, we get thank you for your service, but I'm, how many vets we got in the room? Well, four, five out of twenty one people. That's right up there. This is a twenty five percent veteran community. We look forward to the veterans event every year. And so, like I said, I will, I'm going to offer up my services as doing some of my community or community organizing stuff, and I'll be at the farmer's market meeting and talk to the nice people there on Saturday. And find out what their actual concerns are. Okay, and I think we all need to work together because the more stuff we bring to this town, okay, the faster we're going to revitalize our businesses. Mr. Lawson, how much does a Harley Davidson cost these days?
I know.
Oh, Miss Case, how how convenient. You're saying whisper in his ear. A lot of money. That's right. They they cost twenty five, thirty thousand dollars these days. Okay? I only paid sixty five thousand for my new truck, so and that Harley has a lot less metal in it. So those people that those veterans that are coming on those Harleys, they bring a lot of money to town. And a lot of them are my friends and Max friends and Rusty's friends and everybody else's chief's friends, you know? We want to see this happen this year. So we're going to go over and I'll go over and we'll start working with the farmers market and we'll see what we can make happen.
I can tell you that you there are several of us that will be there. We have arranged that meeting.
Awesome.
And I am actively involved in making that happen. So I just want you to know that, that this council and I am very actively involved in trying to work things out.
Awesome. Well, Miss Case.
Has not gone on deaf ears. I've been working on this with Dan Williams for probably six to eight weeks. So.
Miss Case?
Yes, sir.
However I can be of service, please let me know.
Yes, sir.
Because as Mac said earlier, you know, the leadership thing, we've also got to express and engage in the teamwork.
Absolutely.
Thing, okay? I'll tell you right now, I went shopping today up in Denver. Oh, my God. Prim rib went up three dollars a pound in the last week. Wings in the last two months. Chicken wings, my best damn seller, went up one dollar and sixty five cents a pound. They are at three sixty five a pound today. I didn't get any chicken wings. I bought the cheap ass dumb sticks and thighs instead. I'll feed them to people, but it you can't make much money at food these days, and I'm really worried about the future of our restaurants in this town. We have to bring business to this town, folks. Otherwise, it's going to turn into a serious way station on the way to somewhere else. We want them to stop. We want them to be here. Okay?
It has not fallen on deaf ears.
Anybody find, anybody needs my my help with it? Like I said, I'll be there on Saturday and we'll we'll talk. So like I said, any any way, shape or form, I can help.
I'll see you there.
Hey, Murph, before you leave, I I'm a veteran sitting on council. Nobody's ever reached out to me and my email is public. So
Okay.
Please pass the word if they.
I just got worried about this this past week. So I I brought it up to council because we're getting pretty close to the time time cutoff for getting what permits in or whatever. So I I did talk to Marty and we did, we decided that if anybody can kind of change the rules however they want, then maybe we can change the rules however we want. Well, I mean, we'll offer up our parking lots and we'll get something worked out. I know this is going to be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Murph.
Okay, we have Mr. George English.
Okay.
Hello, members of the council. You may remember I was here when you had the selector or attempted the selection of a mayor. I noticed on some of the comments made here about the use of that property of by the rest area. And I thought, has anyone discussed that with the the local merchants? Perhaps perhaps you have. Now, I just heard this gentleman mention the fact that the restaurants might be hurting in this town. And I would suggest that perhaps before any decisions are made, we we discuss that with the restaurants. And perhaps one of the problems might be parking or how do you, what do you do if you want, if you have an RV and you want to come into town to eat? There's, you know, there's really no place for them to park. We, you know, we're not going, we'll never be in Estes Park, but we could attract a lot of through traffic. And that raises the issue, well, how many people, what is the origin and destination of traffic coming through town? How much of it is local and how much of it is through traffic? If we wanted to encourage the through traffic people to stop in Woodland Park, obviously, they have to have a place to park their RVs and whatnot. Now, it's not a lot of money to do something about that, at least in the shortest term, to see how it would work out. I would suggest that maybe the state highway department do origin and destination surveys on traffic that's coming up the highway, whether how much is for Woodland Park and how much is through traffic. And I also had mentioned, as you may recall, about the possibility of a bypass highway and getting the Upper Mart Foundation to at least provide the funds that we're going to make a modest toll highway, which like the the original Denver Boulder Turnpike, which eventually paid for itself and was then just made a regular state highway. I think we really need to take a long term view of how we're going to use that land and to encourage our businesses here. I think they're probably hurting. And so then the final issue, you were discussing the the problem of hazards and whatnot. And nothing was mentioned about traffic. You know, if you have a tanker truck coming through town and it has a fire, it could do a lot of damage. Or then you have Bluebird Hill, you know, that's that's a pretty risky road to drive, I would think, in the wintertime. So I think we need to take a more comprehensive view of the whole situation of traffic, of perhaps making the town more tourist friendly, handling the traffic jams we have in the summer. It is a US highway, and as I understand, the federal government provides funds up, I think, up to fifty percent for the maintenance of US highways and for an interstate would get even more. So I think we have certain certain things we could do if we had the information. And maybe make a more comprehensive plan regarding traffic, tourism, hazardous hazards, et cetera. I mentioned that for what it's worth. But I do think it's worth investigating. You know, we'll never be in Estes Park nor do we want to be. But you have to remember that tourists, you know, they come through, they spend money, they don't put children in the schools. And one final minor comment about the proposed logo. I think maybe we want to put a deer, you know, on on the logo. We we have our pet deer running around town. And it would show people that we are, we are in the woods. We have deer, you know? So enough enough said, but I might give you something, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. English. And thank you for coming in front of us. We saw you, we didn't see your picture on the application. So thank you for your ideas.
We have Mr. Joe Fury.
Yes.
Fury.
Rob, can you allow Mr. Fury in? Thank you.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Joseph Fury, five, six, five Pembroke Drive. Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and council and all. I wanted to make a comment about the fifteen April council meeting. Y'all considered Mike Nakai for who volunteered for the planning commission. And I know Mike Nakai, he is, he is probably one of the most qualified citizens in Woodland Park. He's attended many planning commission meetings. He supported work sessions with the planning commission. He cares about our community. He's he's researched zoning issues. And and he was the only volunteer. That was kind of the no brainer. Yet four council members, now only three left, voted no for him volunteering to be on the planning commission. And, you know, it it appears that those who voted no do not like zoning for personal reasons. And, you know, I'm I'm this is a zone community. It's been zone, it's been a zone community before those who voted no got here to Woodland Park. So, um, you know, a year and a half ago, the council chamber was full of citizens, standing room only, and some stuck outside because they were concerned about a developer using a loophole to put to put a to use property that was zoned for multifamily and put it to a different use. Mike Nakai is level headed. And it was very sad to see that his volunteer his offer to volunteer was denied. So I'd just like to ask those three remaining who voted no to please try and get in better touch with the citizens of Woodland Park. And just ask council if there's any way to reconsider Mike Nakai for a planning commission. I I think that would be the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. We appreciate your comments. Council, any questions or comments? All right. And we will then move on. Find everything I wrote over. All right, we are on number eight A. Ordinances on initial posting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council. Item eight A is ordinance number thirteen ninety five. This is the initial posting to amend chapter fifteen point two of the municipal code to adopt by reference the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code twenty seventeen second edition printing to accommodate a timely adoption of the twenty twenty National Electric Codes and the twenty twenty one International Plumbing Codes and set the public hearing for June third twenty twenty one. This is a legislative item, so even though it's on initial posting, I would like to review what this is involving. And I've also had a question by Councilman Zulaga to give the council a little bit of background history as to the relationship that the city of Woodland Park enjoys very much with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. So it was in twenty thirteen, Teller County notified Woodland Park that Teller County was going to discontinue the building services to the city. As a result, we scrambled and put together requests for proposals to see if there were any companies that could provide that service, private companies to the city. We did receive two proposals, of which both those required the city to actually subsidize their work because of our size being so small. Luckily, Pike's Peak Regional Building Department was willing to negotiate with us. And we were able to establish an intergovernmental agreement with many benefits to our builders and construction industry, including the professional services provided by regional with a very fast review and permit process. They take a week to review a single family home or less. Teller County was at least twice, if not three times that. So we were very pleased. They also gave us an option to have less fees, lower fees than Teller County for residential. They allowed us to have our own Board of Review as opposed to utilizing the Board of Review in Colorado Springs. So our own builders have the ability to review variance requests or complaints or appeals. They have highly trained inspectors, reviewers, and very professional. They also honored our Teller County contractors licenses so that the contractors did not have to go through a relicensing process. So since two thousand thirteen, we first had a five year intergovernmental agreement. And then in two thousand nineteen, that intergovernmental agreement was renewed for eight years. So we're very happy to have the services of Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. And this evening, we are setting the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the electrical and plumbing codes. It's important to understand that those codes are adopted by the state of Colorado, and it is required for all building departments to adopt these codes. You are, we are unable to carve out any exceptions to these codes unless you want to make them more stringent, which I doubt that's something you would like to do. But so I do have on the Zoom, a couple of representatives from Regional Building Department, their attorney, Gina, and their CEO Roger Lovell, if they're still with us. And of course, we have Mac McVicker, who is the chairperson of the Board of Review. So with that, staff and the Board of Review request that you approve ordinance thirteen ninety five on first reading and set the public hearing for June sixth. Because we are adopting codes by reference, this ordinance must be posted for a minimum of thirty days. Happy to answer questions.
Council, questions or comments?
Rusty? Yes, and I, this one is going to be towards Chairman McVicker, Mac, Sally, and Nina. When I compared the doc, it would may need a legal opinion. When I compared the minutes from your Board of Review that covered it, there was a paragraph that said exactly, Sally, what you just said. The board has the choice to either adopt the codes as written or to amend the codes so long as the amendments are more stringent than what the code dictates. That's the language. But then in the resolution on page two, section two, if if there are any conflicts, the printing of the code adopted here in the Woodland Park Municipal Code or the Woodland Park Engineering specifications, the latter shall take precedence, which legally means our code supersedes which whatever's in the regional code, which makes that an inconsistency in my opinion.
Our code is not, that's if the code is not, it would be an inconsistency if our code is less stringent than what the that code dictates. But right now it's not, and we would make sure that that is not the case. But if if the code was less stringent than than these building codes, then that would be the case.
But that is, that's not what the resolution is saying. So it implies that our resolution implies that what we're approving will supersede whatever's in that document. So I think we need to tweak this language a little bit.
You mean to say unless less stringent, but our code is not.
Something like that. I mean, if there's a case where ours was less stringent, it defaults to.
Yeah, but it can't hurt to have that that language to further clarify. Our code, our code currently doesn't, and we wouldn't present that. But if it makes, you know, more, you know, everyone feel more comfortable. There, I was sort of talking about section two conflicts. I'm just telling Sally.
Page two, Sally, section two conflicts. It states that the latter, which is our code, soup will take precedence over the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code. And that's not a correct statement in all cases.
Gina Kotitsko, attorney for Regional Building Department. Good evening. If you don't mind, may I provide additional comment? Historically, my understanding has been that this language specifically in the document that is before you has been included and has been required in case your code has procedural matters that defer from Pike's Peak Regional Building Department in light of how your jurisdiction and municipality is handling those matters procedurally. That has been the intent of that specific language that has carried over in prior documents specifically to the ordinance. And historically, this is the language that has been seen in prior ordinances as well.
We can certainly tweak tweak that language. But, for example, in the plumbing and the the electrical code, especially the electrical code, our engineering specifications don't deal with electrical code at all. It will deal with some plumbing and valves from a utility standpoint, but that has to do with the public system, not the private plumbing that's in your home or in your business. So the chances of our engineering specifications overriding the electrical or plumbing code is pretty much zero.
Yeah, I I get it, that low probability. I'm simply saying that there is a probability it could happen. So let's clean it up before we approve a document that some developer comes back and says, well, oh, wait a minute.
Yes, no, I fully understand what you're saying, and I think we could add that clause that that half a sentence to the end of section two for the second reading. Yes.
And that was it. I'm not complaining against the ordinance, just there was a potential problem.
Yeah, as clear as possible.
Mayor Pro Tem, yeah.
Absolutely.
So I I'm a little confused in the language in this. We are adopting a twenty seventeen edition of Pike's Peak Regional Building Code. And yet we're referencing twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty one. So can you explain to me how you can have a twenty seventeen building code with twenty twenty electrical code in it and twenty eighteen plumbing code?
Absolutely.
Good.
So here is the twenty seventeen Pike's Peak Building Code. And if you were to read through this building code, it references the suite of all the building codes that are adopted. And the second edition means that it's being updated with the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Council, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Sally, any further? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen ninety five, series twenty twenty one's first reading. Amending chapter fifteen point zero two of the municipal code of the city of Woodland Park by adopting by reference the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code twenty seventeen edition, second printing, and set the public hearing for June third, twenty twenty one.
Do we want to make that motion as amended?
As amended.
Okay.
We'll tweak.
I'll second.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our partners at Regional Building Department.
Yes, thank you for staying on the meeting for so long. We appreciate it.
Just real quick, Roger Lovell here, building official for Pike's Peak Regional Building. Mayor Pro Tem, council members and staff, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to serve the city of Woodland Park, and we look forward to continue our relationship with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now on to item eight B. Got to read your announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is a first reading of ordinance number one, three, nine, six, series twenty twenty one. It is an ordinance to rezone from Community Commercial, the CC Zone District, to multifamily residential suburban, the MFS Zone District, one point seven acres in the west half of the northwest quarter of section twenty four, township twelve, south, range sixty nine west of the sixth PM, with an address of nine twenty Spruce Haven Drive. This one point seven acre tract of land is located just north of Tractor Supply. This is a quasi judicial item. So it is here tonight for first reading, and we hope to set, I hope council will set the public hearing for May twentieth.
Laura?
Is this the vacant lot that's behind the blue tow truck taxi cab?
Behind Fred's towing.
Yes.
Excellent. And what are they going to do there?
So I will have a full staff presentation for May twentieth. The proposal is to rezone it to multifamily suburban residential.
Thank you.
And Kelly, the comment, I was going to say there is no staff package at this time, but it's coming.
Yes.
There was enough information, if you went back into the minutes of the planning commission, I finally figured out what they're doing by digging.
Yeah, I read it, but it must have just gone right over my head.
Yeah.
But it's not the first time. Thank you, Rusty.
My comments on this are not that I have a problem with the overall My comments on this are, not that I have a problem with the overall ordinance proposal, but I have a problem with section three, where it says the city is in a process of developing water supplies which are sufficient, well, I'll go back one more sentence. Water availability as of the date of this ordinance, the growth represented by the properties built out is compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. The city is in the process of developing water supplies which are sufficient to serve the city in ordinance in accordance with a comprehensive plan. I am opposed to the language in an ordinance that establishes legal precedent to the city's comprehensive plan being used as a, anything other than an aspirational document. So to, to codify it under ordinance and then later come back and say, well, according to our comprehensive plan, we have made these decisions in law, I have a problem with that.
So Counselor Zuluaga, this is our typical standard language for rezoning ordinances. This is not a precedent. This isn't the first time we've put it in a rezoning ordinance. But I would defer to legal counsel to see if want to remove it or tweak it or.
Earn your pay.
We'll have to look if that's one of the factors for the rezone and can, and be able to adequately answer you for the second reading for public hearing. Because if this is part of the factors that you guys consider when you do a rezone, then it might be appropriate, but otherwise it might not be, so that I could give you an, we can give you an adequate opinion if that's good for you for the second reading.
The answer is yes.
Oh.
The comprehensive plan is very much a part of a rezoning application.
Well, I know the comprehensive plan, I meant the water availability portion.
Which is part of the comprehensive plan and the criteria that we look at when we look at rezones.
So this is the first, it's come across, of course, we're in the process of doing a concept comprehensive plan right now. And on several of the committees I'm on, we're looking at the language in the 2010 comprehensive plan, and a lot of it is being stricken. It's like, no, don't think so. Well, you were there, you were on Monday, you saw that. And some of this is my attention to the fact that comprehensive plan is an aspirational document, comprehensive plan is not code, and shouldn't drive what we do in the city in terms of changing the law. And that's my opposition to this. So I'm not for moving forward with something that's an ordinance, and then you go back later in the law, and you're saying, well, it says according to the comprehensive plan, and then all of a sudden we have that as legal precedent, and we are, we are moving forward in a way which already some of us are concerned at the representation on the comprehensive plan and how that's coming to be, so.
So just quickly, Laura, before you respond, this is a quasi judicial man, matter, and we typically have a public hearing with the applicants present. And so this type of discussion is perfectly fine, but it's usually better held when the applicants are available and it's at public hearing. So for this particular issue, it's just to get it to a public hearing. And then those issues or concerns that you have, you're welcome to raise, and it would be better addressed at that time, because at this moment, counsel cannot address that issue without it being in a public hearing.
I understand that, but I want this to go before this goes to public hearing. I want this part of it, I don't have a problem with this application, just let me be clear.
Sure.
This, I have no problem with this, this applicant or their application. I have a problem with the language we're using in it.
Sure.
And, and that I want cleared up before it becomes.
We can't.
Oh, we can't? Oh, okay.
It's, well, it's good that you're bringing up the issue so that we can answer and address it.
Would be good.
In an educated manner on, in two weeks. I appreciate you bringing it up, and then we'll make sure that we have a, I mean, we do have, you know, like a true answer, answer and analysis of the code. So I do appreciate it, bringing it up now for that, on the public hearing.
Keep in mind that we're referencing the comprehensive plan that has been adopted and is being used now. Any future comprehensive plan will apply to future consideration. Not to this now, because it's not an adopted or completed document. So the reference is to a comprehensive plan that exists, just for clarification.
Yeah, from 2010.
Yes.
Correct. And I, may I add that on May twentieth, after the public hearing, counsel can tweak the ordinance language.
Right. It's just, we just can't tweak it now, but we can be prepared with your questions.
Correct. And quite honestly, section three, Counselor Zuluaga, exists just to alert about the issue of water and the limitation that water has on growth. We can strike the words comprehensive plan and still keep the essence of that.
Well, good, that's exactly.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
I, I have one. Regarding ordinances on initial posting, it seems to me that there's inconsistency regarding when we have staff packets and when we don't, full of information. Sometimes it comes to us later during the public hearing. Sometimes we have it upfront on initial posting. There doesn't seem to be consistency with that, and I have a hard time of voting to move something forward on a public hearing if I don't have information about it. So that would be my comment.
Do you want to explain why that is?
Some of the, for instance, you heard in ordinance tonight, that was legislative. And so Sally was able to talk in detail about those items. Because this is quasi judicial, it's simply put before you for first reading, and you are able to answer any, or ask any procedural questions, and, and we can talk about procedure. But if you, you, you just have to accept it on first reading and move it forward so that we can get to the public hearing without delving into the full analysis and the staff report and public comment.
So quasi judicial is kind of like a court case.
I understand.
So, and we're the judges in that court case, so we don't want to have the information ahead of time to be able to make a decision.
Absolutely.
And it's more, this is more the discussion as well. Everything that's discussed and considered should be in that one hearing on the second hearing.
Of course, absolutely. It was with just having the ordinance, even the packet didn't list what it was referencing, rezoning, or anything like that. So that's one of those that it, it, there needs to be at least as enough information for us to know what we're voting on to move forward.
We can't violate the quasi judicial ruling.
I think on, on your agenda, did it just have the one sentence, or did it have the full thing that Laura read?
No, it just has the one sentence, and I think we have two different copies of the packet going around on top of it all.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
The ordinance on page fifteen of thirty-one.
So that's some of the problem.
Right, so Laura tried to clarify that. Lack of information on our agenda. But that's about as much as we're going to get when it's quasi judicial.
But you're correct, that the ordinance itself needs, you know, in the packet as it is, because it needs to have a first reading, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion to consider this ordinance first reading?
I'll move to approve ordinance thirteen ninety-six, series two, twenty twenty-one, initial posting, the Grove at Spruce Haven, and set the public hearing for May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. As presented.
I'll second it.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four one.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
We're off to nine A.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Labar. This is item nine A. It is the public hearing for the Pines at Tamarack, PUD preliminary plat, PUD master plan and preliminary plat extension request. It's a request by Dave Garrettson, the property owner, for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Planned Unit Development Master Plan, and a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Preliminary Plat for Residential Development of twenty point six one acres on lot two, excuse me, of block one, Day Spring Christian Fellowship with an address of two oh five Sour Dough Road in the Pines at Tamarack PUD Zone District. Planning Commission, public hearing was held at seven PM on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. On March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the city did receive a written request to extend the PUD master plan and the preliminary plat. On July eighteenth of twenty nineteen, City Council did approve the PUD master plan and the preliminary plat, and both of those documents are approved for two years. They are set to expire on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. They were both approved and are, and will expire in that two-year timeframe. The land currently is for sale. The applicant, the current property owner, did receive approvals and has even gone as far as submitting construction drawings for the proposed deceleration lane, the decel lane on Highway sixty-seven that he was going to construct as part of this development, of this twenty-six lot development. Staff has even looked at those, and those drawings, we understand, have been sent to CDOT and are in CDOT review. So there is every intent to build and develop this property as proposed and approved in the master plan and the preliminary plat. Like I said, this is for sale, and the applicant would like to sell it with the entitlements in place, and therefore he's requesting that the preliminary plat, which is like a concept drawing for the subdivision, be extended for one year, and that the development plan be extended for two years. Staff does not object, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of those extensions. Staff does not object to these extensions. There are no new regulations that we're anticipating that would affect any extension that is approved, if it is approved. As I said, the construction drawings have already been done for the decel lane, which is a CDOT improvement on Highway sixty-seven, and that's a substantial investment that has already occurred. It is in review, it hasn't been approved yet, but they have done all of the engineering for that. They're also proposing to updates, improve Sour Dough Road with, with this proposed development. So staff does not object to the extension, one year for the preliminary plat and two years for the PUD master plan. That concludes my report. We do have Kim Lee Horn online. I'm not sure if there's a Jim Howke that is available.
Yes, he raised his hand.
Oh, and so he is here. He is the engineer for the developer, for Dave Garrettson, and he is able to speak to any questions that counsel may have, as am I.
Counsel, questions?
I do have a question for Laura. If you don't have any memory or recollection on it, then we'll just skip it. I just wanted to know why it was originally made a PUD and, and not like a single-family residential?
Yeah, so the PUD was done way back in nineteen ninety-two. It was zoned PUD when the golf course and all of that area was zoned PUD. There were some preliminary planning done, all of those proposals fell through, then it was zoned PUD with nothing in place, just a PUD Zone District. And then this developer came in, in twenty nineteen, and proposed the twenty-six lot residential subdivision with the master plan in place.
Okay. And there was one sentence, Mr. Nakai at the, the Planning Commission presentation with the public hearing, he asked a question about the density, whether it could be varied. At, at some point in time, the city planner responded that the destiny has established in the MFS, a multifamily zone cannot be changed, even though they're single-family homes.
So it, it is the PUD Zone District that is in place, and the master plan established the density. In a PUD, you can go up to two dwelling units per acre. So they could have had up to forty-one lots per the PUD, but they only proposed and were only approved for twenty-six lots. And that was established, it's in the, the approved PUD, and that will continue with the extension of the PUD. If they want to increase density, they would have to amend the PUD and go through the same process that established that PUD.
Thank you very much. That answers the questions I had about it when I reviewed it. Thank you.
Sure. No questions? Yeah, Robert.
And I have one for the engineer. Is it Jim or Tim?
Jim.
Jim.
Jim. If we grant this extension, the property sells, does the new owner, is it ready to go, is it shovel-ready, or is there still more work that's required on, in your sector to make this happen?
There, there's been substantial, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's been substantial work done already on the final plat documents, just poised and ready. There would not be much left, except for the final review and approvals, as far as my understanding, and Laura could probably add to, to that conversation as well, but.
So Jim, I'm curious how the CDOT application review is going.
Slow, very slow.
No doubt.
Yeah.
So there, there is additional process that would be involved, but I'm stoked about the C, CDOT process, so.
Yeah. I would say we're probably thirty days, we're crossing our fingers that we should have our comments. Finally, comments back, so we'll see.
Good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
We need to open up.
Oh, oh, yeah, I do it every time, every time. I see no one in the audience that has any questions or comments? No one signed up? And no one on Zoom? No hands up?
Yep.
We have that we can see there. I just forget to ask every single time, even though it's right there, right in front of me. You know? All right, so now may I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the request by David Garrettson, the property owner, for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Planned Unit Development, PUD, master plan, and a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Preliminary Plat for Residential Development on twenty point six one acres on lot two, block one, Day Spring Christian Fellowship, two oh five Sour Dough Road in the Pines at Tamarack, PUD Zone District.
I'll second.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Jim. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're off to number ten, new business, and we're going to ten B. Chip will present.
Good evening, counsel. Before you is resolution eight seventy-six. Bottom line up front, implementing level two water restrictions currently. We're in what's called level zero. Level two basically skips level one, and we go straight to two days a week, but I will go into a brief presentation as to why. Colorado's broken into basins. City Woodland Park gets their augmentation water from two basins, the Arkansas Basin and the Colorado Basin. Our augmentation water is our most valuable water. This water makes it legal for us to pump our local sources. So when I start looking at available water, water restrictions, there's really three things to look at. The augmentation water, how much water we have to pump our local sources. Local water and that supply, and then drought conditions, and what other communities are also doing. Drought conditions and what other communities are doing kind of go hand in hand, because we're all in the same boat, if you will. So little star there indicates where Woodland Park is, we fall right on the divide between the South Plat and the Arkansas Basin. All of our groundwater is in, our local groundwater is in the South Plat. Our augmentation water comes from the Arkansas Basin and the Colorado River Basin. So we're a basin diverter. We take water out of other basins to put back into the basin that we take our local water out of. So there is different colors of water, if you will. This graph in front of you basically shows how much water is in the snowpack in the Arkansas Basin. The dark blue line, and you can see, if I can get my cursor up here, we currently are right here, we're about eighty percent of average. So everything below the red curve is average, everything above, obviously, is above average, below, below average. You can see the Arkansas Basin dipped a little bit above, and then it has come back down. You're probably saying, well, we're pretty close to average for most of the year. The area under the curve is really where, where we get our water, and it's a little less. I want to point out year twenty twenty is the light blue, which followed just above average and then died off a little bit at the end of the year. So you see the, I can find my cursor again, you can see where the light blue died off. We will follow probably a similar curve. Now, this graph is the, is the most up-to-date graph I can provide to you. This was April twenty-eighth, does not include the recent snow that we just had. So I would anticipate a little uptick right here. So I would anticipate a little uptick right here, come up and then slowly taper back down. Colorado or the Arkansas Basin is basically our Lake Henry, Lake Meredith, Colorado Canal shares that produces some of our augmentation water, but not all of it. As I said, the Colorado Basin is the next basin where we get most of our augmentation water. We get that through tunnels, pipelines, so on and so forth, that divert it from the Arkansas Basin into the, I'm sorry, divert from the Colorado Basin into the Arkansas. We store that water in Twin Lakes and also in Lake Henry and Lake Meredith. Before you hear is the Colorado River Basin. And you can see the the dark blue line below average. Snowpack for this time of the year, we're at seventy two percent. And I anticipate this to taper off as well. You can see in twenty twenty, we stayed pretty much on average. We're always one year away from our next drought. And what indicates or another indicator is, let's say we have lots of augmentation water. Great, but what's it really doing locally? What's what's their conditions here? Because if it's dry here, we're obviously using more water. And as we use more water, that's taking more augmentation water. Okay, so multiple factors to consider. See your next slide. This graph shows stored augmentation water, and this is probably the most important after the snowpack. So these are, we track every month. And this is broken down into year and where we currently sit for augmentation water. So in an average year for augmentation water, which is about twenty five to thirty five percent of our total water, that that number represents every year around three hundred acre feet on a good year. Last year, we used three hundred and twenty five ish acre feet. What I want to point out on this graph, and you have this graph in front of you, the twenty twenty, so the blue line with the with the triangles right here, we're just about seven hundred and fifty acre feet of stored augmentation water. So you're like, wow, it's pretty good. That's just over two years in supply. Okay, you can see on an average year what happened is we this gain right here that we saw. And then if you follow my cursor, this line just significantly drops off. And the reason for that is because we were dry locally. We use more water, use more augmentation water. Back in twenty thirteen, when we went into water restrictions the last time, you can see this line right here at the bottom is pretty flat. That's because in twenty thirteen, we didn't have a lot of augmentation water. We were in water restrictions and we purchased physical water and leased shares of augmentation water. The graphs I showed you before showed a little bit below average. And I compare that to twenty eighteen. I'm gonna try to go back to the previous in the Arkansas. So twenty eighteen is the green in the Arkansas, which was a lot lower. However, in the Colorado, where we get most of our water, the green pretty much is following, for the most part, twenty twenty one snowpack. So I can I can pretty closely anticipate the yield on our shares for augmentation water to be closely related to twenty eighteen. If you look at twenty eighteen on the stored water graph, it's the green, the light greens right here. And I think I'm getting colorblind here.
It's so you can kick it up on the right below the orange.
Twenty eighteen is kind of a purply, it's a purply one. It's this one right here. So you see this gain here in twenty eighteen. I could probably anticipate similar gain starting. So for twenty twenty one, you see the red X's with the red line. So for April, I don't I don't have end of April's numbers yet because those are still being compiled. Those will be sent very shortly. I'm anticipating this number right here to drop right around it here. So I have Colorado Canal numbers and we're about twenty acre feet less than we were last month. And then on top of that, you count, you factor in how much we've used last month, which was just around nine, ten acre feet in Twin Lakes. So assuming zero gains in Twin because the snow hasn't started to really melt yet. Question?
I do. I'm sorry to interrupt, but while we're on this graph, I was interested to know what caused the spike in two thousand fourteen and two thousand nineteen in May. Those seem to be contradictory to the rest of the the curve. Do we know what occurred during those years to cause that spike?
So in those two years, that's when the snow started to melt and probably heated up fast enough to where most of our gains came in that month. So it shot right up. And then after that, our gains dropped off and then our usage picks up. And that's why our 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 storage goes down. So good question. So I'm anticipating basically the same curve as twenty eighteen as far as gains. Now, usage is a different story, depends on what happens locally. If we continue to get, I'll say rain, I'll even take snow at this point, but I'd rather take rain. If we get that, then our water usage will level off because really what factors in on this is our outdoor watering. Our indoor watering stays the same. It's summer season when people start watering outdoors, our usage doubles. So that's what we really are limiting when it comes to water restrictions is outdoor usage. So at, find my cursor here, right here, currently right around four hundred acre feet in storage. Okay, we will drop to just a just a little bit next month and then I'm anticipating the gains to come up and then come back down. So the goal with water restrictions is to flatten that curve so we don't keep declining because is the more we can save in augmentation water this year, the better we will be for next year. Okay, because we don't know what the snowpack's going to bring next year. So for augmentation water, the more we can save locally, the more we, the less we use, the more we can save. Next factor was local conditions. This graph you also have in front of you. This is basically showing three monitoring wells that we watch religiously that are an indication of precipitation in local groundwater. So if you can imagine a well, top of the wells, maybe two feet above the ground. So from the top of the well down is where the water level is. Okay, so as on this graph, you can see, let's see, my cursor. Right here is in two thousand and thirteen, water levels were dropping. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, we're in water restrictions right here. This is the historical low that we've been tracking. They water conditions improved up to two thousand and fifteen and then they started dropping off again. All the way down into the June, February, or I'm sorry, January, February, March timeframe, where we had significantly low levels. They have since increased. That's due to local precipitation. However, I'm anticipating that to go back down because the snows will stop and I hope the rain continues, but we just don't know. So local groundwater, second factor is also dropping off. Here's the US drought monitor. You can see Colorado, we're kind of split right down the middle between, I'll say, extreme drought and severe drought. Looking at a little bit closer in Colorado, Teller County, we sit here, we're moderate drought to severe drought. Level two water restrictions basically limits outdoor watering to two days a week by your address. Here's the breakdown. Designated hours, May through September, no watering between noon and six P M. That's always in effect, even on level zero. Also through October through April, same thing, always in effect. We do try to limit what we water on the public facilities, being the sports fields where they typically water every day. We limit city staff to only four days a week. And then no, no watering for winds over ten miles per hour. Recommendation is to approve Resolution eight seventy six. This would come into effect May thirteenth, so it gives a week. And then we will do public notice typically. And to go back to kind of the beginning, I really talk about augmentation, the water that makes it legal to pump our local sources. Typically, that water produces two times what we use in a year. This year, I'm predicting just less than one year, just based off snowpack.
Counsel, questions or comments?
I have a few questions. So you said, how many different levels of water restrictions do we have? Can you give us a little more information as far as what those look like?
So we have level zero, one and two.
Okay.
Level zero is always in effect. I really don't consider that a water restriction because that's always no watering between noon and six and then the winds over ten certain temperatures. So we're always in that. So level one is basically three days a week with level zero in there. And level two is two days a week with level zero in there.
Any further questions or comments?
Sorry, I have one more. Is it typical when we do water restrictions that we put some sort of expiration on them?
When the water returns, I take it off.
Okay.
So I come back to you and.
I I do typically tend to favor if we're putting any store restrictions or regulations in place that they have an expiration date. That would be my one recommendation with this resolution is that we put a sunset date into it. And that way, if we need to revisit it and extend it, we can. But I'm always more comfortable including an expiration date upfront instead of just leaving it open ended.
Do you have any historical context of that? Like last time you did level two, how long did it last?
That watering season.
Was it?
Just that watering season?
Yeah.
So that's how long it lasted. I.
Just that watering season.
You guys pay me to watch this like a hawk. So trust me, I want to sell water. That's how we pay our bills.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So so what you're basically saying to Councilmember Alfieri is that you're just as keen to have the restrictions lifted as she is?
Very much so.
Absolutely. No, and I I don't doubt that in the least. It's just for me, looking at any and all of these things, when we're restricting anything, it doesn't matter what it is. I think we learn this lesson the hard way sometimes with sunset dates to really just include those upfront. We can always go back and extend these things if needed later on. But I really don't like to leave these indefinitely. And that way, we're we're at least coming back and being aware. I mean, it's nice if, you know, for instance, we have to revisit this water restriction. You know, say we set an expiration date of September thirtieth and that's not long enough and we need to come back and do it again. That's bringing it to the forefront for the citizens to remind them to conserve water because we might have to continue restrictions if we're not being prudent with how we use it. So it keeps it in the forefront of our minds and theirs as well.
So there is dates in months established in those as well. So it's May through September. And then you have different restrictions, October through April, because of the outdoor watering season. If you were to ask my opinion, I would put this on and tell I know what the snowpack's going to be next year.
Counsel, any other?
Well, it seems to me it's pretty timely that we met, we act on this tonight because you want to put it into effect next week, correct?
Well, I think it's fair to our our customers that if they are looking at establishing yards, even if we are considering this, that they know that upfront before they spend a lot of money establishing a yard and then they can't water.
They can't water, for sure. So is can the recommendation or the modification that Councilmember Alfieri's making, can that be simply amended into this so that we can pass it this this evening?
I would suggest that we see how this goes before we start amending it because I'm not interested in in amending it.
I was just looking at the attorney and she's nodding her head and saying it's easy to do or something to that effect.
Of course, if a resolution is up in front of you, you can you can make amendments to it. So for where it says, you know, therefore be resolved, if you want to put a certain date or even until that date or unless changed earlier by city council resolution, that language is, you know, that's your right to make a motion to amend and then you amend the resolution.
So you're wanting to delete until changed by city council resolution to add something like until September thirtieth, twenty twenty one at twelve? Eleven fifty nine?
Yeah, I think something to the extent of that the restriction will expire September thirtieth and twenty twenty one at that time or or sooner if changed by or if sooner revoked by a city council resolution before that date.
Ken, could you recommend a date?
Next year, April. I'm serious. I mean, that's that's when I know the snow, where the snow sits, how much water is in that snow.
Right.
It's not changing. We're not getting going to get more this time of the year. I'm I'm sorry. It's just how I feel about it. And you, this is, I mean that.
Yeah, I don't mind. I don't mind making that change in the resolution, but I would go with the expert's opinion for the date.
Agreed. I do not have an issue with the information Kip's providing or argue with it. He is the expert on this. My only hang up to be, you know, able to approve this is that it doesn't have an expiration date. But absolutely, Kip, whatever your recommendation is for an expiration date, I'm happy to go with it, just as long as there's one in here. That that's my only concern.
All right, so let's amend to your recommended date. I think we should ask the council to vote. If we're going to amend it, I'd like a motion and the formal action to be taken.
Sure, I was just asking for his date.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, April thirtieth, was it? Yep, end of the. Usually by then, I we have a.
Well, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution such that the paragraph indicating the end date be changed until April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, twenty two, at which time the city council can review further extensions.
Very good. Suzanne, did you get that?
Yeah. I also had the suggestion that the motion was sooner if revoked by city council.
I guess we could add.
Can I give recommend language based on your political? So I think what we're saying is that it would, that the resolution would say level two watering restrictions shall be in effect for the city of Woodland Park and its water customers starting Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty one at twelve oh one A M until May thirtieth, two thousand, oh, sorry, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty two, comma, or until, or unless changed to an earlier date by city council resolution. That way you don't tie it.
And I'll second that.
And I'll I'll definitely bring to council if we can lift them sooner.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, we had a motion and a second. Alfieri?
Yes.
Case?
No.
LeBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kip. Thanks, Kip. So now, do we need a motion to approve the ordinance? Was that just for the amendment?
That's true.
So, okay, let let me try this. Let me give this a go. So I move that we approve ordinance number eight seventy six, implementing level two water restrictions for the city of Woodland Park with the amendments previously approved.
And it's a resolution?
Oh, did I say ordinance? I'm sorry, I mean resolution.
I'll second.
Case?
No.
LeBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
And Alfieri?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
It wasn't unanimous.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just, I I just have to say, I just, I approve the the water restrictions. I think you're imposing something that doesn't need to happen. Staff's been doing this, PIP, public's used to it for many, many, many years. So I just think the minutia is is just more than needs to happen. So they got enough to do.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we're going to move on to eleven reports. And counsel, could I get consensus to allow our planning director to go ahead and present her brief report first so that she doesn't have to wait for the rest of our reports? And she could just skedaddle if she's ready.
I agree.
If you're comfortable with that. Thank you for that. If you're comfortable with that. Thank you for that consideration.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
So just a very brief update on the comprehensive plan. Because the first thing I'd like you to know is that on May twentieth, Logan Simpson will be here. And doing a presentation of where we are in the process. They'll also speak to the reliability and the methodology of the surveys. As well as our program that we're going to implement to try to get more folks. To go toward the website and they have improved the website. So that it's a little bit more user friendly. If you take a look at it here between now and the twentieth. We are three and a half months into the process right now of a nine month process. So about one third into it. We have eight very active subcommittees. That are drilling down on the goals, objectives, and action items. So I'm really thrilled. A couple Mondays ago, we had over close to sixty people on the Zoom call. That all broke out into their subcommittees and really impressed with the work. That our citizens are doing to help give us a blueprint into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. All right. We'll go in reverse and mayor's reports, and I don't have anything to report this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to council reports, and we'll start with council member Alfieri. So I have two things to mention. One is May seventeenth, Coannis will be hosting its annual Krabby Tax Night. It's a great time. So you can purchase tickets a number of places around town. I can't tell you all the places, but yes, Vector Bank is one of them. So keep that in mind. They still have tickets available. The other thing is, I would just mention, Holiday Home Tour has started meeting for their event this year. So we're really happy to see that happen this year. And looking forward to and expecting to be able to host that entire event in full at the end of twenty twenty one. The other thing I wanted to mention, since we are talking about council reports, is because we've had some changes. Do we want to perhaps revisit council assignments to boards and commissions? Because I think we have a few. I mean, I know when I joined council, everyone was already on the committees. So there wasn't, but now we have a few gaps. So maybe that's something we can add to the next meeting to discuss.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep, that's all I have.
Council member Neil.
I'm gonna have two council reports. The first is that I wish Sally had actually stayed. But the first one is on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. This is a kind of a success story, given that on May third, when we began the meeting. It was a pretty rough beginning because both the chairman and the vice chairman had resigned. And they had not conducted a transition of any form to the rest of the subcommittee. So when the Zoom session began, we didn't have anybody in charge. I had to kind of step in as the city liaison and make a judgment call, a ruling. We did have a secretary there, which past experienced boards, it would fall to another officer. So I asked Sarah Horwood, who is our secretary, to step in. And act as the presiding officer and run the meeting, which she did very well. Matter of fact, it was a fantastic job. Hats out. Hats off to you, Sarah. Good job. We did a real quick tutorial on how to lead discussions and ask for motion seconds and everything. And as a result, we were able to fill our officer election requirement for twenty twenty one. We were delinquent and we were successful there. And I'm proud to announce that Sarah Horwood is our new chairman. She was elected. Cassidy Gilganist is our new vice chairman, and Renzi Ricketts is our new secretary. The meeting did fulfill all the agenda items to include a presentation by Grace Johnson. She did a great job. Showing us the Woodland Park Scoops campaign, which is the light handed approach to trying to get people to pick up. And she showed us some of the signs. We did have one visitor, Karen Bugatti, that I hope is maybe out listening. I hope we didn't scare her off. Because we spent so much time trying to get organized and looking like a bunch of amateur hour. But we got back on. We do actually do beautification events, because all she heard was chaos and then picking up dog poop. It would be a real turn off if you came. That was the only meeting you came to. But it it was great. And there will be a decision made on terminating the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful dot org independent website. As we move over to just keeping up to date the city's independent. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful page that we have. And that's what I have for my committee report for that meeting. My next comment is not so good. And this is in my hat as the city council liaises on to the subcommittee. Watching the conduct of the comprehensive plan. If if there has been in my subcommittee alone, I'm seeing a lot of pre-screening. Of what will be presented to the citizens. So it it's we're building a bias into it, whether it's known or. Just unintentional, just don't realize that a bias is is taking place in the construction of our survey. If a bias comes forward, I, as a city council member, will know, and it's the old garbage in, garbage out. The results of the comprehensive plan will be tainted, and I would have to, in clear conscience. If if we're doing an endorsement later on, because it's actually the planning commission's plan. I will have to vote no, because I could not endorse something that is is skewed biased. So I'm, I guess this is serving notice that whatever action needs to take place in in subcommittees. To not pre-screen whatever comments are bubbling up from the public. And remember, I wear two hats there, citizen or city council. So I'm trying to play the game when I I speak in line as a citizen. That all the comments are captured and come forward in whatever manner. Let the citizens decide then on the rank ordering, and then we go forward. And then it could become a unbiased. Document. Yeah, and sad to say that I have to give this report. I'm not overly excited about what I'm seeing in my subcommittee. Thank you.
I I don't think this is the appropriate time to address it necessarily, but you may want to bring it up with Sally. I don't know why your subcommittee is doing any kind of survey outside of what Logan Simpson is.
The construction of the survey is being biased, filtered. It's being filtered on what goes into the survey. In terms of what the citizens can vote on. In other words.
No, no, wait. I mean, who's producing the survey?
The subcommittee is generating it and making decisions on what is not allowed to be presented.
I think you should run that by Sally and Logan Simpson to see if that's even an appropriate measure for the subcommittee to be doing. I can say that we're not creating.
Where that some of the subcommittees are not. I did run it by.
Yeah, and have our city attorney participate in that discussion with the city planner and Logan Simpson. I'm just not sure that that's an appropriate measure to take outside of what the company is already producing for surveys professionally. So. I think I'm, perhaps I'm hearing two different things. I don't, I might be interpreting this wrong. But I think and I'm when you guys are saying surveys, you're talking about the actual surveys that appear online, questionnaires for citizens. I think you're referring and using the term survey to mean basically the comprehensive plan that's coming out of this. It's not actually a questionnaire when you're saying survey, correct?
The survey that's being constructed, that will be posted online, is being filtered.
The subcommittee report.
Is filtering what goes into the survey.
Which by that you mean the report of the subcommittee. Right.
The the construction of the survey is is being.
So I I believe there's a series of questionnaires that are developed to gather feedback from the general population. And I, we've done a series of those so far. Are those the ones you're talking about?
The, there are questions that are going to be added to our subcommittee's survey. The questions.
Define survey.
Let's go.
Took us down a rabbit hole.
We can go to the Logan Simpson survey.
So it is the questionnaire that already exists that people are giving their feedback to questions that are being posed to the public.
Right, the questions that are being, that the public are finally seeing have been filtered. They've been screened. They've been, there's a bias being built into it. And the the worry of the subcommittee is.
Right, that's that's not their charge.
They don't want, what goes before the citizens to be diluted. And that's what makes me.
Done by the Logan Simpson?
No.
Okay. Got it. There, I think that's inappropriate.
That's not what our direction has been, at least for the subcommittee I'm serving on. We're reviewing and adding new ideas to the report, the action items, the priorities, all those things. And adding to or taking away. We're not creating any questionnaire at all. We're not at all. We haven't been asked to produce a questionnaire.
And and this group. Giving a council report, liaison report of my one.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, so I think that that would be a good topic to breach with Sally and have Nina present. And perhaps Logan Simpson representative themselves be present.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I'm picking up that that's inappropriate. Sure.
I don't I don't think that's the way it's been done with for the other service. I think I know the survey you're talking about, and that's an anomaly in the process.
Yeah, because I did participate on on different subcommittee, only one meeting, which is not a good sample site. But I didn't see the same filtering or screening, elimination of things that the citizens would get to vote on.
Yeah, we're not doing anything like that at my subcommittee. So anyhow, that that would be a good topic to broach. With Sally and Nina, Logan Simpson.
Okay. Council member Case.
I I can't think of a thing. Thank you for asking.
Council member Zuluaga.
Well, both Main Street and the DDA have given us very eloquent reports this evening.
Yes.
But there is one, one thing I want to bring up, and that is our our agenda. I'm wondering if it is impossible for us to revisit the order, the sequence order of our agenda. So that we don't have people hanging out to the very last. And and one area that I thought we might like to visit, I talked with with Suzanne about it, was the ordinances on the initial posting. Could we just put those on the consent calendar? Because it's not a point of discussion. It's just approval of of an initial posting of it. If we have any questions, it will be in our packet. So if it has to be pulled off of the consent calendar, because there's some question, it's easy to do. And it doesn't, that's just one thought. Could we combine that with the consent calendar? And does the consent calendar have to be right up the front? Could it, could that be at the tail end? So can we get public business done first and then stuff that is more staff and council later? So just a thought.
I'm gonna let Nina address that part, because I think quasi judicial might be an issue.
So we should hear from you.
So the count, your council, I think it would require council amendment to your council rules of procedure for your order of business. But that could be done by a resolution for the order. And then you have ordinances on initial posting, and it says public comment may be heard, which public comment still can be heard on consent agenda. If you pull it off the consent agenda, but I think it would just require an amendment to your rules of procedure. And I believe I spoke with Suzanne about this as well. I think we can't think of any other reason why that cannot happen.
Right, so would council like me to bring back a resolution changing that? I would just need consensus.
I think that would be fine. The only concern I have is, will it shorten it? If if you have still have questions about the first readings, you know what I mean? And even though, I mean, I'm great, that's cool. But if we just all vote for the consent calendar and and there's no questions about these. But I have found historically, there is always a question.
I agreed.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure changing order would speed it up. But if we have a way of getting public heard sooner rather than later, because that's something we had amended. I know Kelly and I are on council, because we we decided to move public comments on items not on agenda first, because it used to be last. So, but I'm not sure, I mean, we could maybe move the initial postings to. After public hearings.
We can move consent agenda to the end.
Yeah.
Be one.
And then it sounds like you want public comment on items on agenda before your presentations. Because that sounds to be like in the city you have long, not long, but it's what I was gonna say. It just in in my experience at other cities, they have public comment even before that. So if if that's what you want to do for your public, that's an option to again mend this. I'm looking at your order of business that you are able to amend however you want for your rules of procedure.
And is, does this need to be an agenda item for next council?
Yes, because this is adopted. Well, it's good to give, because staff can say, an idea of what you're thinking of, so we could draft the resolution. But the resolution will be on the public, you know, public publicly.
Agenda?
Yeah, public agenda to discuss.
Yeah, because I just didn't want to make any consensus about any particular thing during council reports.
Just just a suggestion to do this very thing.
Yeah, so I I think if we, if everyone wouldn't mind either calling each other or sending an email of what order they would like to see. And sending that to Suzanne, and then Suzanne can tell us what there's a consensus for. And then we'll talk about it on the agenda when we come back to say we've come to a consensus to move these items on the agenda this way. To speed up the process for the public.
At least there's only five.
Because I I feel like we could talk about it for another half hour.
Yeah.
So, so everybody just give your suggestions into what you think should come first and last.
And I can also share with council some other municipalities' agendas and how they do it.
That would be great.
It just seems to me. As of late, and I mean over the last few months, our ceremonies and presentations are taking two hours.
Yeah.
And so. If we could be maybe just ask to think about being a little more concise, us ourselves.
Yeah.
Each presenter is given a seven minute timeline.
Right, and they took thirty minutes, twenty minutes. So if.
Twelve minutes.
Yeah, and so we, if we could be more concise, maybe that would translate into them being more concise. And maybe as a partnership with the presenter and us, maybe we could, not just to belittle it or make it unimportant. But maybe we could be, try to be a little more efficient with that.
Kelly, the the one thing I had, I thought about that is the ceremonies and presentations would probably be a good thing to move back. But there are going to be at times where we may do an appointment, such as a council member, that we would want to appoint at the beginning of the meeting. So they can take seats and become a part of whatever should the appointment be.
Well, and those are guests typically, and so we don't want them sitting around and waiting either, right?
I think it might help if Suzanne provides us with some examples.
Okay, thank you. And and find, find the councils who have record meetings in the fastest time. Share their agendas with us.
I'll put in my list, sir. What's the fastest council meeting you ever had?
Yeah, yeah, with, you know, quasi judicial legislative presentations.
Okay.
You know. So, but that's a great suggestion. So, but that's a great suggestion.
And we also have ten minutes before we have to vote to continue the meeting.
Okay, it's just not to change the flavor of the meeting, but just to try and build in a little more efficiency.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, great suggestion.
You have ten minutes, Michael.
Well, Nina, do you have?
Oh, no.
Present?
Okay.
Michael?
We'll be very brief. I have nothing, but Suzanne, did you want to?
I do. I have an important matter, as a matter of fact. Last council meeting, council approved resolution number eight seventy-four, which was the naming and memorial committee. We need to pick what council member would like to serve on that committee. And in the past, I've just done an email, like when we did the interviews for the attorney, asked for volunteers. This evening I'm asking, Mayor Protem serves on that committee by default. Is there anyone on council that would like to serve on this committee? It will not be a committee that meets often, hoping, praying that we don't have to do this many more times. So we just need a council member to serve on this naming committee. And we will be actually bringing some applications before council in the near future. Does anyone have a burning desire?
I'll do it if anyone else wants to. Thank you. I just have the ability to be flexible with my schedule, since I have the coolest boss in the world.
Okay, thank you. I will add you as a, I'll add you as a committee member. Thank you.
Do we need to vote out notes?
No, nope.
That's all I had.
Excellent.
We don't have to vote to continue.
Nope, we're already ready to adjourn already.
And we don't have to vote to adjourn. Meeting's adjourned.
See, see, I want, I.